Aloha and welcome to this Thursday evening's EVA Neighborhood Board Meeting. It is seven oh one. We will get started. We'll start out with the reading of the Rules of Speaking. By Vice President Alex.
Thank you, John. Can you, okay. All right, aloha. This is your community public forum, your input and cooperation. I really appreciate it. EVA Neighborhood Board is an advisory board and we provide fairness, integrity, and collaboration to all to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise their hand and when recognized by the chair to address chairs comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under one minute, one turn per person. Those giving reports are urged to keep their reports less than three minutes and presentations under ten minutes. Please silent all electronic devices. The board will make a good faith effort to provide the public with the opportunity to observe the meeting as it happens and an opportunity to provide oral testimony without a physical presence in the physical meeting room. Please ensure that your computer or phone is muted unless you are speaking. Note, the board may take action on any agenda item. As required by the state sunshine law, specific issues not noted on the agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote, eight of this eleven member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they are of major importance and will affect a significant number of people.
Thank you. We will move on to introduction of board members, starting with our four board members online. Susan, John, Jenna, and Mike, if you could introduce yourselves, please.
Hello, Susan.
Susan, go.
Hello, Susan Gorman Jake.
Hello, this is John Rogers coming to you from Newcastle, New South Wales, Australia. Good day, everyone.
Good day, mate.
Hi, Mike Plowman, coming at you from the mainland.
How's it, Mike?
Hi, everyone. It's Jenna. Sorry to be there tonight. I'm just really busy with my dissertation, so I'm just taking the time as I can get to work on it.
Thank you, Jenna. And to my right.
Good evening, everyone. Aloha. This is Alexander Gauss.
Hey, aloha, everyone. This is Isaiah Kirton.
Aloha, this is Zach Espino.
And my name is John Clark III. From here, we'll move on to Public Safety First Responder Reports, starting with Honolulu Fire Department Duty Officer. Okay.
Evening, everybody. I am Captain Michael Hahn from the EVA Beach Fire Station. I guess first I will address a couple of questions that was posed last month. The first question was, there were three hazardous material incidents and there were questions regarding if there are any trends or if they're related. The three of them were, one occurred on January thirteenth. That was just a gasoline spill on Cooley Road at Seven Eleven. On the seventeenth, there was a gas leak at Kohona Honolulu. Excavator was digging next to a residential driveway and accidentally damaged the gas line. And on the twenty-ninth of January, HPD responded to a gas leak at Campbell. To an older line that was eventually shut off by Hawaii gas. Question two, HPD gives a six-month span to show any trends regarding alarms that happen. Does the HPD provide or can provide statistics that show types of trends that are happening during the timeframe? Currently, we are working to upgrade our website by providing an updated incident data dashboard to replace the fire response mapping that's still on our website. Hopefully, that's under development. It'll be ready by June twenty twenty-five. Our statistics for February twenty twenty-five. We had one structure fire, one wildland fire. Six rubbish fires and six activated fire alarms. We've, last month, went to one hundred sixty-nine medical alarms, two motor vehicle collisions. And one additional hazardous material incident. And then finally, our fire safety tip for March, March twenty twenty-five is smoke alarms. Smoke alarms are crucial for saving lives and play a key role in a home fire escape plan. When installed properly and maintained correctly, they provide early alerts, giving occupants the chance to evacuate quickly. Install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area, like a hallway, and on each level of home. Test your smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button and finally, replace smoke alarms when they are ten years old or stop responding to being tested.
Ten years old? I didn't know that. Okay. Questions from members of the board? Questions from members of the board online? Members of the community? Online or in the room? I just got one quick one. So, one of the topics that's been, like a better word, popular or notorious. You know, city council just passed a law last month regarding electric bikes. And there was a recent passing of a seven-year-old girl that was in an accident in our neighborhood here. Are you or could you, if you don't currently do it, given that we have a new law, start tracking the injuries associated with electric bikes?
Um, as far as the data collected, we do have, all our reports are logged in through electronic base. On our end, as far as on the company officer, we're not able to access like stats per type. But that's, that's something I can address and I can actually get that. See if that's something being moved forward and compile some statistics that they're available.
Thank you, sir. I think that would be a good data point, given the new law and given that we have had some very high-profile accidents here in EVA. I'm not sure about the rest of the island, but I know here in EVA, there's been some, some injuries and even deaths associated with that.
Definitely, I can follow up on that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Stay safe, sir. Next, Honolulu Police Department Officer Pagan, I believe you're online.
Yes, good evening, Chair. Good evening, members of the board, members of the community. I'm Corporal Pagan with the Honolulu Peace Department District Gate Community Peacing Team. And I do have your stats for February. In February, we had twenty-three motor vehicle thefts, nine in our area. Twenty-three burglaries, five in our area. One hundred and twenty thefts. Eighteen in our area, twenty-six unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, one in our area. There's a total of seven thousand four hundred forty-nine calls for service. Two thousand sixty-six in our area. There was a total of seven hundred fifty-three vehicle citations. Speeding, moving, and parking violations issued throughout the month. The only other thing I did want to mention was that, talking about the e-bikes. I'm not going to say that based on the accident that we had, but starting just prior to the new year, we've been working with Campbell High School to notify the public and the parents and the students about the legality and the safety riding of e-bikes. I believe the school had sent out letters to the family to let them know that HPD will start enforcing as well as some of the laws. Last week, we went out and did a sign waving to let people know about the safety and being safe and being aware of the e-bikes. This morning, we went out there in the, prior to the start of school and issued citations for those people that were riding basically electric vehicles. And we also warned students that were riding the electric bikes regarding helmets. I believe we stopped, I'm trying to see if Lieutenant Carrera is on yet. He was on. I don't have the exact numbers, but I believe we stopped about twelve or thirteen of the electric vehicles. Those riders were cited. We did have them call their parents to come and pick up the bikes. And we did let them know that because their citation already issued and a report being documented, if they were caught on the bike again, we would be citing them for operating a vehicle without a driver's license as a juvenile, which is an arrestable offense. So they can be arrested. We didn't arrest anyone this morning. We were given warnings when we were citing for all the other violations. And we let them know that the vehicle would be taken into custody for evidence should they be caught. We were set up at the Boys and Girls Club area. Some kids saw us and they went around to North Road and kind of worked around, but we're hoping the word gets out to the students to let them know the seriousness of it. We will continue to do our enforcement. Patrol is doing their enforcement. We are working with some other units to do some special projects to go out there and do some enforcement. So we are asking parents to be aware that the biggest and the easiest way to tell if a bike is legal, electric bike, is if there's pedals to operate the bike. An e-bike is considered an electric assist bike, which means there's pedals that you can operate the vehicle without electric power. Other than that, the others, the bigger bikes, the ones that look like dirt bikes, they're considered an electric dirt bike. And which, as of right now, would fall under or is falling under the dirt bike and motorcycles law. So we're citing people for those. The other thing is that the electric bikes, the legal, the legal power is seven hundred and fifty watts. Some of the, the other bikes are twelve kilowatts. Some of them go up to sixty miles an hour. And kids are riding them without helmets and doing stunts and all kind of other things. So we are reminding parents to be aware of that. We are going to be doing our enforcement. Some parents weren't very happy that their children got cited today. But again, it is the law. It is for their safety and it is because of the issues that we've been having, so. Other than that, I'm open to any comments, questions, or concerns.
Thank you for that informative report, Officer Pagan. Questions from members of the board? One member, Gauss?
Thank you for that, Officer Pagan. Glad to hear that you guys are out there enforcing some, some of these, these rules, these laws and, and also the approach of kind of giving the citation, but but not getting them in too much trouble for those that honestly don't know. But, you know, I definitely think that, you know, this is a question that's posed, posed to me recently and even today, actually. And I'm wondering if there's a way, like you have your, your stat sheet you give us. Is there any way you could add something just in the short term? Because, because it's such a problem over here on, on EVA's side, as Chair Clark was saying. Is there a way that you could add a row here on your spreadsheet that are, that you press out every week? That numerate, that quantifies the number of citations that are given for e-bike violations on a monthly basis? Would that be possible?
Honestly, no, because the citations, when we run our stats for the citations, they would be, because, for example, some of the citations that were issued this morning for e-bikes were for no license, no license plate, no current registration, no safety check. When we run our stats, they come based on how many citations under that classification. Our stats don't allow us to break it down by the type of vehicle they were riding. So that's, that's one of the issues that we have. I can go check with our computer guys, our ITV guys, to see if there is something. But as of right now, when our officers input their citations into the computer system, it's basically a citation number as well as the violations. There's nothing for the type of vehicle that was issued and stuff like that. So again, some of the e-bike guys are getting cited for the same thing that motor vehicles are being cited for, so. We can definitely look into trying to see if we can get the accidents that were involved with e-bikes and stuff like that. But I don't think we'd be able to break them down based on the type of violations or the type of vehicles they were riding when they got the violations. But I will check into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Pagan. Any other questions for members of the board? Members of the board online? Seeing none? Seeing none? Members in the community? Yes, ma'am. If you could step up to the microphone. Please state your name loud and clear.
My, one minute here. My name is Barbara Jesse. I'm a resident of EVA Beach. First, I want to thank you for all that you do. And I hope that policemen in Hawaii are being paid a living wage. I came to ask you to do something more, two things actually. I'm asking you to lead the people of Oahu to obey the speed limit signs twenty-four-seven all roads. Number two, asking you to get rid of the red light stop and go signs. Stop and go, excuse me. I'm asking you to get rid of red light stop and go traffic, including those like Fort Weaver Road and Kail Newley. Where those in the far right lane don't even have to stop at all the to turn right. I do see more people trying to obey speed limits, but then when there's an open space, you know, it just seems to be ruined. So I'm asking the police to take on the training, the training role to stop stress and save lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments from members of the community, not in the meeting room, any online? Thank you, Officer Pagan. Shall we move on to EVA Wheaton Seed, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The only thing I have for Wheaton Seed is just wanted to let the public know that we're going to be starting our junior bowling program. Starting on the twenty-fifth of this month, it runs for six weeks. We'll be working with some kids from the EVA Beach Boys and Girls Club. So if anyone has kids that are interested in that, they can join the Boys and Girls Club. Let them know that they're interested. I believe they have a very minimal fee to join the club. Us taking members from that club is basically because by them being members of the club, there's a insurance policy that they're covered under when we take them off property to do some of these events and stuff like that. The other thing was the, we had our Safer Communities, a Safer Community Fair with the US Attorney's Office on March eighth. It was a very big success. Thank you for those that came out. Other than that, I'm open to any comments, questions, or concerns regarding Wheaton Seed.
Questions or comments from members of the board? Not in the physical meeting space, any online? I just have one question, Officer Pagan, regarding EVA Wheaton Seed. I know typically you hold fundraisers. Is the big one planned anytime near or within the next six months or so?
Yes, I'm sorry. We do have our golf tournament scheduled for April. I'm sorry. May twenty-third. That's going to be at Hawakalee Golf Course. If you are interested in putting a team together, you can go to the Wheaton Seed website. I'm sorry, I don't have the email address with me. I will get it to you. And we'll, if we can get a flyer done before the next meeting, we'll send it out for that as well. We also do have our Legacy Luncheon, which is coming up in October, I believe. Don't hold me to that. Let me get you the date for that next month.
Okay. Flat footed there, but I know the, that's a pretty big fundraiser for you folks, so I just wanted to try to get it out there early.
Yes, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving on to board administration and planning. We're going to move ahead with approval of the regular meeting minutes unless board members have any objections or corrections. Seeing none? Okay, we'll move on for, as approved of the regular meeting minutes. Moving on to presentations, we have three presentations this evening. And actually, so typically, board members, we usually try to keep the presentations, as you noted, three presentations. Because they're, they can be up to ten minutes in length. The Marine Corps has a presentation that they would like to provide based upon some questions that Board Member Gauss had. So if I could get someone to move to add them to the agenda. Does not affect a significant number of people in a negative or positive way. It's just informational. So they're here to present. They have folks on island that are here in March but won't be here in April. So. So Boarder Gauss has moved to add it to the agenda and Isaiah has seconded the motion. So we would add that to item four D, four Delta. Oh, we got a vote? Yeah, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor? Online?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Did I hear one opposed? No, no? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion passes. Thank you, board members. Okay, moving on to presentations. We'll start with West Laka Estates and Upgrade Project. Okay, not in the physical meeting space, online? Okay, works out. All right. We still have three presentations. Okay, moving on to University of Hawaii West Oahu Road Building Update. Gentlemen? You also have the podium there as well. Yes, yeah, prefer that one.
Well, aloha, Chair, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you folks tonight. My name is Michael Shibata. I'm the Director of Strategic Development and Partnership for the University of Hawaii. I'm joined here tonight with our partners from Hawaii Community Development Authority and the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corp. You guys want to introduce yourselves?
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Craig Nakamoto. I'm the Executive Director of the Hawaii Community Development Authority.
Hi, good evening and aloha. Randy Chu from HHFTC.
Thanks, guys. And so the, the purpose for tonight's presentation is we just wanted to provide you folks with an update on what our respective agencies are jointly undertaking for a project over at UH West Oahu. Next slide, please. And so for a little bit of context, the UH West Oahu, what we call our Makai Lands, consists of about five hundred acres of land. And so those lands are bounded by Farrington Highway on the left side and Koala Kaii Parkway that runs along the right side of, of our lands. And in terms of what's currently there, we, the UH West Oahu campus, the phase one of the campus was constructed. It currently accommodates about total enrollment of about three thousand total students. And as part of that, they have also additional lands that are planned for future campus expansion, and that's the next slide. And so I think this, this graphic here kind of better illustrates the campus planning. And so if you're looking at the screen on the right, the, the, the orange, purple, blue, green are kind of represent the, the campus plans for future expansion. And on the right side, in the areas identified in yellow, is what the university considers our non-campus lands or lands that have always been planned for future growth for mixed-use housing development. And the area that we are here to present on tonight is the area circled in red, kind of more on the top of the screen. And that's the area that's adjacent to the Keonei Rail Station, which is Rail Station Two, and next slide. And so this, 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 you know, this aerial kind of gives you an idea of what's, what's currently there at UH West, while you have the campus, you've got Tokai University. The, you have the Keonei Rail Station, the Park and Ride that's built. And on the other side of Koala Kaii Parkway, we have Ho'opili, which they've been constructing on, you know, housing, hotel development. And so the, you know, we're here tonight to provide you kind of updates on our multi-agency initiative where our, our three respective agencies are working together, each combining our own respective assets and resources to really help spur further growth and development over at UH West Oahu. And so what you have on the screen here is in that yellow circle area is really the area in focus, which really consists of about twenty acres of land. The yellow areas are planned roads that do have state funds that have been appropriated by the state legislature to the Hawaii Community Development Authority in the amount of thirty-five million. And so those roads, which are connected to existing infrastructure, the Ho'omohala Avenue that was recently built, that provides access to the rail station and the Park and Ride and the campus. And so really, this is just extending and trying to be, making the best use of our resources to build additional roads and then also encourage further housing. And so the housing is those two parcels on the screen over there, which were kind of, again, accounts are about twenty acres. We're going to be moving on the parcel four, which is about ten acres in size. And so the next couple of slides kind of provide, will be providing more specifics as to what each agency is working on for this effort. And so I've got the first slide, which is UH, just again, confirming UH is the landowner. We are providing land for future, for future development over at UH West Oahu. We have entered into a number of agreements with related to this effort. So I think the first and the big one is the memorandum of agreement that we've entered into with Hawaii Community Development Authority as well as Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corp. That agreement was blessed by our UH border regions and and then with the result of that, we have additional agreements that we've entered into with, with, to further that work. So we do have some right-of-entries with Hawaii Community Development Authority to get the, so they can do the planning, the design, and the construction of the roads over there. And then we are working active coordination with HHFTC on on, on how we can encourage and further housing there. And so that's the updates from the university. I just want, I believe, HCD, Craig, you're next.
Thank you, Michael. So on HCD's part, as Michael mentioned, all of these, our three agencies are combining our efforts. Each agency bringing to this project their own strengths and abilities. Because for HCD, we received the thirty-five million dollar funding from the legislature during the last session to, essentially to build onsite infrastructure on UH-owned land to facilitate the housing and other developments that will go on, those two parcels that Michael pointed out. Right now, our contractor is doing some pre-construction activities, soil testing and other things. We don't have a firm construction start date yet. We anticipate that when, when we're nearing that of construction start date, we will alert the community, work with the UH, UH West Oahu Campus staff and students to let them know when construction will start and also let the community know that construction will start. But we don't have a firm construction date as of yet. Still doing some pre-construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Craig. HHFTC will be taking care of the task with the development of the housing portion of the project on the campus. So we will, we will be issuing a request for proposals with the objective to promote or procure a developer to construct either for sale, leasehold, or a rental project in, for the targeted Hawaii residents. And to provide a revenue stream to the university. The anticipated timelines for the project is, we plan to issue the RFP in April of this year with the proposals due in July. A developer selection in October of two thousand twenty-five and developer approval in February of two thousand twenty-six. Key features is that HHFTC will offer five million dollars of funding to support the design and planning work. And we will be seeking an annual lease rent to be paid to the university. So the first phase of the work will be that area circled in yellow. It's a little less than ten acres. We anticipate it to be about a hundred fifty to two hundred units total for that area. That's phase one of the project. And as Michael indicated, the area just north of it would be the next phase, but that hasn't been initiated yet. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Craig and Randy. And so this is the wrap-up slide and just, you know, I just wanted to thank you folks for allowing us the ability to provide you folks an update tonight. We have been doing this presentation to, you know, folks who might be interested, elected officials. We did do a community meeting for UH West Oahu students, faculty, and staff. We also did a presentation to the Makakilo Kapalea Neighborhood Board in January. And, you know, we, we do update our respective boards and, you know, for our Board of Regents, for the university, we do provide updates as well for there. So that wraps up our update presentation tonight. Just wanted to kind of let you know, you know, what we're planning on doing moving forward. And the idea is that we will update you along the way.
Saved by the bell, perfect timing. Thank you for that high-level overview of the plans. Board members, any questions in the physical meeting room? We'll start with Zach.
I just had a question about, in terms of the long-term development plans for UH West Oahu, where does this fit in in that plan?
Yes, I would say this is what I'll call our Phase One of the development plans. I think an earlier, on one of the presentation slides earlier, the colored one, it did kind of identify lands that we would be pursuing further development on. You know, the strategy is obviously to try to locate, encourage our initial phases where we have existing infrastructure and roads. So if you're looking at it from a planning standpoint, kind of focusing on the top where Farrington Highway, Koala Kai Parkway kind of converge, move down and then move from right to left.
Okay, Mr. Gauss.
Smash a couple of questions here together for you, so I can get them in there. And this is just because I'm curious more. So, you know, one is like, why, so obviously trying to, you know, generate revenue for the university. Why housing versus, say, dorms? Is that something that's not seen as feasible or that they wouldn't get filled? So I'm just curious, like, why not housing specifically for students? That was one question. And then related to the question by Espino is, how much of that mixed-use area that you were showing, that yellow mixed-use area, is slated for housing versus, and what other type of development have you guys discussed to go there? It is more, again, this is more just my curiosity. And for us as a board, I think we'd all be interested in knowing.
Sure. And I can appreciate your question about student housing and dorms. We are looking at student housing in particular at UH West Oahu. We actually completed a market study ending of last year. So we are actively looking at exploring student housing in particular at UH West Oahu. And, you know, I think the idea would be that would be more considered as part of the campus lands. And so we didn't really touch on it in the presentation, but, you know, that is part of the overall strategy is how do we provide housing for students? And then, you know, the way I look at the housing that we're planning with this initial phase is that, while it may not be specifically for students, right? It does allow opportunities for faculty, staff and the overall public to, you know, have access to units closer to the campus. And then in terms of your question about other types of uses that might not be housing in particular or residential, yeah, we are, we are looking at, you know, I think the main intent is to do housing, because that is a critical need there. But where it makes sense, you know, we might, you know, where we can do a mixed-use project in particular, near the rail stations in particular, would make sense. And so, you know, we're in the process of updating our long-range development plan. And so I think those are items that are going to get further flushed out in the upcoming, let's call it the upcoming year.
Any other question for members in the physical room? Ms. Gorman Chang, I believe you had your hand up for a question?
Yes, yes. I heard one of you say they are targeted residents for these rental apartments. Could you talk about who the targeted residents would be?
Well, the targeted population that we're looking at is basically affordable housing, so people making 140% AMI and below.
Okay, great. And then also I heard, so these are going to be rental apartments, not condos to buy? Is that correct?
Well, the way we're issuing the RFP is we're letting the developers propose whether they want to make it a rental project or a lease fee-for-sale project. So right now, currently, you know, there's basically rental projects and for-sale projects. This is a third type of product, which is leasehold, where the land is leasehold, but you own the unit.
I see. And then, and then, so that would give U of H an income stream forever, I guess, for, and the people, if it does become condos or whatever, they would pay that leasehold monthly indefinitely. Correct? So that would be the income stream idea?
Yes, that would, that would be the income stream for the university, because they're the landowner.
Okay, and would any preferences be given to faculty and staff for, you know, the rentals or the leaseholders you explained?
We haven't gotten to that point at this time, but, you know, we certainly can look into preference for, you know, faculty, staff or certain professions that are in, in short supply.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Susan. Jenna?
Thank you. I just had two questions. One, for those who aren't necessarily familiar with this whole process, like, could you remind the room, like, what the mission is of the development of this, of this specific area and, like, the objectives that you're hoping to achieve with, like, the development? Since I believe that's what's going to be articulated in the RFP. And then my second question is, could we put in, like, the requests in the RFP for developers to, to increase the amount of affordable housing? I think I have a vague understanding of what this process is, but I think it's early in the process for me to ask this. And I just want to encourage, like, a higher percentage of affordable housing in the plans that these developers propose, because just from my, like, very brief understanding of housing here, it just doesn't seem like enough.
Well, this RFP, like we mentioned, is really the first phase. There's a lot of area designated for use other than university teaching purposes. And, you know, this first phase, we thought that because of its location, it's ideal for transit-oriented development, where folks can just hop on the rail to go to work in town. That's just the first phase. The next phases may include mixed use, like Mike said, you know, where there's some restaurants or stores, maybe to create a campus atmosphere, campus town.
Jenna? Is that it?
Thank you. And then, like, my question about, like, as a board, like, are we able to ask you folks to include in the request for proposal, like, to have a higher affordable housing than what is typically asked from our housing here? I don't know. It's just, I'm hoping, like, maybe we could take this opportunity, especially of the neighborhood on the west side, that any new development actually strives to go beyond a minimum requested for housing. For the housing.
So follow up on Jenna's point, I want to clarify. So typically speaking, developers come to the Neighborhood Board to brief us. We're an advisory board and we do connect with our elected officials here. I believe what Jenna's asking is, is there the opportunity for us to help shape the proposal and the top line and bottom line numbers associated with affordable housing? Yes, Jenna?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the purpose of today's presentation was just to provide you folks with an update. If, again, if you folks want to provide a comment, I mean, you can, I mean, you're an advisory board, you're certainly in your capacity to do so. But I would just say that, you know, the university is looking at it, you know, again, this is just 10 acres in the larger master plan. So we are looking at it holistically about how do we incorporate different types of products within, you know, within the overall master plan? And so, you know, I understand where the comment is coming from, related to affordable housing. It is a need. And so, you know, we are taking that into consideration.
Before I turn on with the questions for the community, I'd like to dovetail on Jenna's point, because you're doing this in conjunction with Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation, correct?
Yes.
And their stated mission is affordable housing, correct?
And it is an affordable, workforce affordable housing project, yes.
Okay, workforce affordable housing. So Board Member Mitch had a question. Can you restate that 140% of, what'd you say earlier, the number?
AMI area median income, yeah.
Okay. So it's, it's not necessarily targeted to students, faculty and staff. Okay, that's my first question. I just want to reiterate that. And secondly, in theory, because it's leasehold or rental, someone could come purchase it. Like, if Mitch and I wanted to develop our own LLC and put in a couple million dollars apiece, we could buy several units and then we could basically sublease those out ourselves at market rates, potentially.
Randy, you want to clarify that?
Yes, you know, like you mentioned, it's going to, the target is for 140% area mean income and below. So those would be a restriction. So it would have to be owner occupants, so you can't buy it as an investment and rent it out.
Okay.
It's for local people to live and work, thank you.
That's, that's a very important, critical point. Thank you, appreciate that. Members of the community online? Mr. Hicks, I believe you're online. Go ahead.
Yes, hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, so I just want to know, like, how this development would affect, you know, being that we are seeing sewage fee increases, you know, on the whole island, you know, as well as our homeowner insurance increase, storm drain increase, like, will this development impact that? Would it further raise the increases? And I also, I just wanted to let everyone know that UH West Oahu does not own these lands. This land is under Honouliuli Ahupua'a. Miriam Kekawanohe is actually the real landowner of these lands. And so that any type of actions that happens in regards to these lands, it has to be counseled by the Alorio lineal heirs of Miriam Kekawanohe. Have you guys consulted with any heirs and lineal descendants of Miriam Kekawanohe of the Ahupua of Honouliuli, which is royal patent 6971, Land Commission Award 1126? Sorry, that's 11216. Mahalo.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Did you want to respond to that?
I mean, university's position is we own the, we have a deed for the property that was issued by the state that was provided from James Campbell Company. And so I'm not aware of that, if, you know.
Where did James Campbell get it from?
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Hicks.
So, yeah.
You guys don't own it.
Mr. Hicks. Next member of the community to ask a question is Brett Copus.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. My concern is, Mr. Hicks brought it up with the sewage and stuff, but let me get this straight. The University of Hawaii was given 500 acres of land to build a school. They, I understand the need for student housing and faculty housing, but now you're telling me that the university is going to get into the housing building process? When the state's already doing it, the county's already doing it, and now the university is going to do it? I mean, if, I understand the need for a revenue stream, but the university's charter is to teach, not to build housing. So I am adamantly object to this, this project based on those grounds. That is my taxpayers' money that I pay to the university, to the state that gets funneled to the university to teach, not to build housing. I yield.
Thank you, sir. And next up, we have Ms. Tara Rojas. Tara?
Aloha, Tara Rojas. So to piggyback off on that, I would like to say that affordable housing, I went to the HCD, who was a part of this collaboration, which HHFDC and now UH, exactly. There is a push to combine all of your housing agencies now under a new, I forgot the new title now, but the Office of Housing. This is really wrong. This is heva, because at the HCD, a public hearing decision-making, March 5th, 99-year leasehold is not affordable. It's not affordable. The sewer fee increase, when I looked up, what is the 80% median AMI? For a two-bedroom, it's already like $2,000. Now, so you, so, and it's not targeted toward low income. It's like, you know, low cost does not mean low income. I want to put this for the record. I also oppose this, because you also leave out then, you're thinking families. What about families that are non-traditional? What about single parents? Affordable housing as it is, it's based off on like a two-income. I know there's a one-person income, but still let that, this is not affordable. There's a homeowner increase, fee increase, insurance increase, there's a sewer fee increase, there's one more meeting, yeah? And then we got to watch for the city council. This is all unaffordable. This is not affordable. It's affordable for you all building it and you all reap the profits. And once it's built, again, it's not affordable. So I oppose this as well, because of all the increases and this collaboration, which is just wrong. Mahalo.
Thank you, Tara, appreciate it. If you gentlemen like to respond to that, I don't see any other questions online. Other than that?
Chair, I have a quick question.
Okay, go ahead, Isaiah.
Thank you, guys, for the presentation. I appreciate it. My quick question is, what is the metric for success for this project? Is it a monetary metric? Like, you're trying to, if it's just success that anything is built? Or you're going to get 100 million in revenue and profit and that's the success? Is there a metric?
Yeah, so maybe to provide a little bit of context, especially one of some of the other, the earlier question about the UH West Oahu lands and the 500 acres. It's always been envisioned as part of the plan that a portion of those lands would, were considered private development lands. And the idea with those, developing those is the revenues from that would help to support the continued success of the UH West Oahu campus. So when we talk about revenues that are generating from those lands, it's really to help benefit and ensure the success for that campus. And so from the university's position, talking about metrics, that's important for us, because, yes, we do have a higher education mission. And the development of that helps to support that campus and our overall mission. So just to clarify on that in terms of the metric, and I don't know if Craig or Randy have anything else you want to add?
Thank you. And that makes sense. I know Kamakaia schools does the same thing throughout the islands, actually. So they have long leaseholds, businesses lease the land and then they pay into the, into the endowment that they're, that they have. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we have our final presentation. Not just, just. Oh, yeah, two more, sorry. Thanks, Mitch. Employee Assistance Resources from Lani Kila Pacific. Online, I presume? Not in the physical meeting space and not online, okay? All right. Moving on to United States Marine Corps, Kanao Haime. Marine Base. Floor is yours.
Good evening, Chair, Board, Community, thanks for having me. Lieutenant O'Hara with Marine Corps Base Hawaii. So last month, we presented you guys with a study on the Range Compatibility Use Zone study that we did that goes into surface danger zones and the noise impact on the community. Online, we have Jeffrey Olander, who was a part of the team that did the study itself. So he'll be going through the presentation. He'll be answering the majority of your questions. I'll also be ceding my time later in the meeting. And then afterwards, if there's any additional questions, whatever, I'll stick around and you can ask those questions. So Jeff, you've got the floor.
Jeff, if, just an added note, you have the full 10 minutes, full 10-minute presentation.
Correct.
Should have gone to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Everybody can hear me okay and see the slides?
Yes.
Super. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. We had the chance to be with you last month in person. And again, we're here to support the Marine Corps. So I'm representing the team today that prepared this study. And you have Lieutenant O'Hara in the room. And like, like he said, my name's Jeff Olander. A couple of things up on the screen there, just for folks who didn't see it last week. There's, and you'll have these slides afterward. There's a QR link there that you can go and get to these two studies. One is for Puloa and one is for Kanao Bay and Bellows Training Area. And then I also threw the number up here for the noise reporting line, which can be done either by phone or online there for folks who have issues with that. So my intent today is just to kind of run through the basis of the program and kind of what we did. I'm not going to go into the detail of all the things that are in that, in that study. what we did. I'm not gonna go into the detail of all the things that are in that, in that study. Uh, the idea of presenting this to the public is that, uh, you know, the whole study's available for reading. And then, you know, the Marine Corps can field follow-on questions from that. But essentially, this is a, a, a Marine Corps-wide program uh, that, that has as its goal is to protect the, the welfare of folks living near the ranges and training areas. Uh, because of, you know, the ef- uh, effects of, of noise and, and the potential for safety issues that people should know about, that kind of thing. Uh, so the, um, purpose of this is to take a good hard look at, uh, the programs that the Marine Corps has. Share the information with the public, uh, in order that, uh, that folks know, uh, what, what's going on. It's just an information sharing type of program. Um, again, it's a planning document. It's not binding on anyone. So, um, it, it talks uh, about the noise, the, what, what are called the range compatible zones, having to do with the various levels of safety. Um, and then provides a little bit of land use analysis for the areas outside the installation uh, with some recommendations for, for land use that would be appropriately compatible and or not. Uh, but, but again, there's no binding, um, element to it. Um, it's just a, of information sharing. Uh, in the case of Puloa, um, the, um, the range compatible zones are, are pretty limited because of the limited nature of the terrain that occurs there. So Puloa is used for small arms training. So that's essentially rifles, pistols, shotguns. Um, and the, the range compatible use, uh, range compatible zone one is the sum of all the surface danger zones for those weapons. Um, and, and effectively, that's largely to the south of the facility over the water in the area that's restricted already uh, for, for navigation because of the inlet for Pearl Harbor. Uh, in this case, Puloa does not have any aviation-delivered weapons, so there is no weapons danger zone to be added. And there are no lasers in use there, which, and those are both elements of the program that are looked at normally. Uh, but again, it's a rifle pistol shotgun type of range, no aviation weapons and no lasers being used. Um, the sec- essentially, the, the R C Z one is the area nobody wants to be in. So that's the area where direct fire or ricochets, uh, are gonna fall. And you can kind of see the photo there. It's explained a little bit more in the document for those who want to take a look at it and, and follow on with questions for the Marine Corps. Uh, in this case, it's either, uh, the, the green area that's depicted on the map is either on the installation boundary or again in that, uh, defensive sea area around the Pearl Harbor inlet. Uh, in terms of noise, um, you know, a little bit of just background on how this works, um, weapons firing, the small arms firing is kind of a, a short-term impulsive noise. So each event is a, is a very short duration crack of the weapon. Uh, the type of metric that's used to measure that noise is peak sound pressure level. Uh, so in the document, this is explained a little bit more, but it's decibels peak is the symbol that's used for that. And it's, uh, basically the highest that the noise gets within the noisiest tenth of a second of the event. Um, and it is presented essentially by the overall levels. We'll see in the next slide. Um, within a couple of categories. And over time, you know, the Defense Department has standards for this that define the areas that are considered to be more annoying or less annoying. And, and the two threshold numbers are eighty-seven decibels peak and a hundred and four decibels peak. Um, the, the closest to the event itself is, is over a hundred and four. Uh, that's, uh, what they consider noise zone three. That's the most severely impacted. And that, that stays on the installation. Um, for the most part, the intermediate area, um, which is above eighty-seven but below one oh four is noise zone two. And that's considered to have moderate impact. And there's certain land uses that are not recommended for that. You know, you don't, it's just like anything else that's a noisy event in your, in your, uh, a noisy, a noise producer in the community. Um, you, you don't want to have a daycare center at the end of a runway at Pearl Harbor or, uh, I mean, at, uh, at Honolulu Airport. I mean, um, so noise zone one is that area that's outside the eighty-seven. And in general, that's, um, again, it's, it fits the numbers that historically folks have fewer noise complaints about just because it's slower. There's, there's a number of things that can affect what you do here. And a lot of that, um, the probably the most significant one in this case is the weather condition. So, you know, when there's wind, uh, it, it affects the ability of noise to travel. So in, in the case of your community, you know, with, with winds from the direction that kind of the sound sort of follows the wind direction and it kind of can reduce that. Uh, you've also got a significant number of people who are exposed to the approach aircraft noise going into Honolulu, uh, which in some cases ends up being greater than what, what comes from Puloa, depending on location. Um, what we use for methodology, and I think this was the root of one of the questions that came up last month at the neighborhood board here, m- meeting here was, um, it, this is a modeling process. So across all of the Army and all of the Marine Corps, uh, the same types of weapons are used. And so that they're measured very accurately on a controlled area, um, with, with accurate measurements in all directions and that kind of thing. And then that information is used in a computer software modeling scenario so that, you know, tho- that provides the results that we're working with here. And a couple of the advantages of that, we get questions on this quite a bit when we do noise studies is, you know, why wouldn't you go out and measure it? And, and there's some of the metrics that use annual, uh, total, total noise for like a whole year. Um, and the, you know, the requirement to have somebody with noise monitors at a thousand locations around a facility to, to monitor that is pretty onerous. And, um, this also by using computer modeling allows you to test scenarios uh, for mitigation and that kind of thing. And a lot of that went on with this project. Uh, well, let's try it this way. What if we fired less? What if it was at different times of the day and those kind of things? And, and because you can try things that aren't actually being done yet, um, it, it allows you to do that via modeling. Uh, so that the main, the main model used is the one that's on the screen there. It's called SARMOM and it's a standard across the Defense Department. It's used at all, all D O D facilities for anything below fifty caliber, um, rifle fires, what's considered small arms. Um, this process has identified a few items that the, the Marine Corps has already acted upon. So some of the, what they call administrative controls, the westernmost, um, range on, on the facility, uh, has been kind of reduced in use. That's the closest to the, the town of Eva Beach. Um, but, and it's been reduced by only allowing weapons with noise suppressors on them. Um, and that, uh, all the ones using that, that particular range are gonna be suppressed in the future. So that, that's the one that's closest to the, the town. And it's been reduced in use, uh, to only certain types of things that have noise suppressors. Uh, likewise, on the east side of the range, Range E and Range F, uh, some of the actual largest amounts of noise come from rifles and shotguns and that. So those have been reduced to pistol only, which are typically a little bit quieter. And that's just in an effort to sort of concentrate the noisiest events on the facility towards the center that has the, the least bleed over into the community. Um, and then a big one that I think where it was the subject of a number of complaints from folks in the community had to do with the public address system. And, you know, that exists there so that the safety officers for every live-fire event need to be able to immediately address everybody in the facility. Um, they have to do that based on the rules of the airspace over it. Uh, so if there's an airplane going into Honolulu, for instance, that's a little bit out of the ordinary and is gonna pass, uh, in a different place than is normally planned for, they can check fire, uh, whi- which is a term used for stop all activity. Um, and, and that public address system is very important. Uh, but the, the facility has done some pretty good efforts to move the speakers, uh, around and move the direction that they're facing uh, to be able to maintain the ability to communicate with everybody, but reduce the amount of that noise that goes off base. So uh, we're hopefully reducing some of the annoyance that that causes the residents who are close to it. Um, in addition to those administrative controls, we've identified some, some engineering controls, um, which includes, uh, construction of a berm and a wall, um, on Range B. So there's some of that behind and some on the western side uh, that are, uh, that, that, that process has begun. Um, and that will also contribute towards reducing the amount of noise that goes off the facility. And there's a depiction, there's a number of depictions in the, in the document, but, uh, the, the map that's shown here shows that the long-term effect of that is that um, when we talked earlier about that, the two contours, the hundred and four D B peak is the red, uh, faci- red line that's inside, um, largely inside the, uh, the facility itself. The orange line on the screen you see there is the eighty-seven decibels peak. And that does go off the facility some, um, mostly on the, the north side or to the east in the Iroquois Point area. Um, and then obviously some to the west, although that's been reduced significantly with those controls that have been changed. So you can read more about that in the document and that kind of thing. So this is just to kind of give you the quick overview of the process um, and, and provide you those, um, links so that you can find it. Uh, and then I just wanted to close my prepared comments, uh, just by pointing out that, that phone number and the, um, sound reporting website are, are in there. So if there's folks who have concern about the noise, uh, those things are tracked and, and, and summarized and, and acted on. And I'll, I'll pause there and I can take questions or Lieutenant can help with that. Uh, Lieutenant O'Hara was in the room with you there. Thank you for your, your time and, and attention to this. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Questions from members of the board? In the physical space? Or remember else?
They, thank you both. Thank you for that presentation. That was very informative. Um, just to clarify, now, I uh, recognizing that I haven't looked in detail, I was waiting till after this presentation to kind of give me the gist of it before I go into detail on it. But so that, just to clarify, in that methods, it's, it's strictly a modeling exercise. So there were no actual, uh, you know, uh, my, um, recordings of noise. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that I, I heard that correctly.
Yeah, I, I believe that s- some of the, some of the work to try to, um, test the P A system and stuff, um, there's, there's some folks, uh, in the operation, um, occupational safety folks from the base who, who did come out and make some measurements and that kind of thing um, to try to test how, how that was gonna be done. But for the weapons firing itself, uh, we relied heavily on the model. And, and those are all based on physical measurements that have been taken and, and sort of a actual, uh, locations and conditions. But, you know, the sound of a certain type of round being fired from a certain type of weapon is pretty consistent across different places. So uh, the local terrain, weather, humidity, winds, those kinds of things are applied in the model. Uh, but it, it's pretty well established that those are, uh, accurate. Uh, there's, there's been a couple, um, um, as far as the difference between modeling and, and measuring, uh, there's been a couple of congressionally mandated checks against that. We've got a, a few projects where we did both and compared them because there was some concern from at, at a couple of locations in Konos, uh, on the mainland that, um, you know, people kind of challenged it and, and they funded some studies to compare them. And they, they compare very favorably. So it reinforced everybody's belief in that. But essentially, yes, it's mostly modeling there. For some of those mi- mitigations, it was, uh, some measurement.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, if you, if you could make your answers a little bit more concise, uh,
Okay, sure.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, and, and they're just, you, um, yes, they're short. So, you know, I, I just noticed that it said, so the A and B side, like, as you recognize in the presentation, are closer to the Eva Beach community. And so you, I noticed that sniper firing will, the word will be suppressed. And I'm, so I'm curious on, there's timelines for that. Like, is there, is there actual timeline for when that will be suppressed? And then kind of hand in hand with that is like the long-term engineering goals, right? So for people that are in that eighty-seven decibel area, which are the people that live up, border up against the west side, and the new D H H L development will be in that same, uh, that little yellow line you said would actually extend out into that D H H L and, uh, uh, development. And so I guess the question is, is the sniper file sur- suppressing? And that those twelve-foot barriers will help a lot. And we've been hearing, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, like, we've been hearing about that for six, seven years at least. And so, you know, when, when, when is like the pencil gonna get put to paper, so to speak? And I'm actually, you know, is there any money allotted to that at this time? Is, are, are there plans? Because that would make a big difference for people in the community if that stuff stops getting talked about and actually occurs. So, yeah.
Sure. Great, great question. I
I can actually
Sure. Is, uh, the administrative things have been done already. So, uh, sniper fire being suppressed, that, that's already in existence. And, um, my understanding of the progress on the, the berm construction is that um, the can, the design has been funded. So that's underway. And that, that's, that follows the military construction timeline. I'll, I'll let the Marine Corps answer tho- those pieces, but I, uh, I know the design is underway.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, we have a follow-on question, none in the physical meeting space. Uh, Mr. Plowman, online?
Okay, Chair. Uh, may I share my screen?
Yes.
This is from, uh, this is from your study. How you just showed the, us this as well. It's pretty alarming. Um, you have a close look here. This is the surface danger zone as you, as the, the composite surface danger zone, as you've explained it. Uh, if you zoom in on it, it should be no surprise that we're finding bullets right here. This area here that you're saying is, is a danger zone, is not protected at all. This is where we stand up paddle, surf, fish. Uh, Nakamakai comes out there and does a big workshop with kids, Tuesday on the weekend. But the point is, is the people who are using this beach park need to be aware that they are dangerously close or in the surface danger zone if they're in the water. I maintain that the bat wing is still applicable and that because we are finding uh, bullet fragments in the bat wing outside of your modeled stuff, um, it makes me skeptical of the model. I think we need to get high-speed cameras out there and actually see where the bullets are flying in the air. That technology is available. Um, it's interesting that I, I read the Connie Oe one. It's interesting that, uh, your instruction says an evaluation of the airspace above this range, uh, is necessary. It's not done in this report, even though you've got aircraft flying through your S D Z here, uh, to eight right and four left and right for certain. Um, I find the, the ignoring that is, is very concerning. And, um, finally, with the noise, as, as Mr. Gauss, Dr. Gauss pointed out, um, and brought up the fact that this is mostly modeling, listen to your answer. That's, that's all fine. But we are dealing with apples and oranges here when you're talking about D B peak. As it relates to the law and the levels of noise that we are protected by law from having to experience. I'm skeptical that your modeling is accurate. I, I'd like to see it verified. But what also needs to be done is an actual sampling. The noise is there. We can sample it in D B A, which is what the Department of Health uses, uh, maximum fifty-five D B A during the day. So that we can show the public where they are living and, excuse me, and where there are homes that are experiencing levels that are illegal, uh, for reasons of health. So. I've gone three minutes. I'm sorry, Chair, but, uh, there's a lot. There's a lot of discussion that still needs to go on with this chair. Thanks. I'm sorry I went over.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, moving on to Ms. Rojas, you have one minute?
Aloha. So there's nothing like being, you know, woken up at seven, seven-thirty in the morning, three point four miles away from the shooting range from the sound of guns firing. Now, I would like to say two things. One, the Hawaiian homelands are gonna be closer to the fire range than where I'm at three point four miles away. Mind you, we, this is illegally occupying, yeah? Illegal occ- occupation still. And then three, we've been hearing about, we're hearing this now. When is this fire range gonna be moved? This has been in the minutes of this Eva Beach neighborhood board meeting, board meeting for years. For years. So again, pencil to paper and actually from paper to action. When is this fire range gonna be moved because of the lead contamination? And now these are the health issues. And again, three point five or miles away, we can hear the shots being fired at seven, seven-thirty in the morning in illegally occupied Hawaii.
Thank you.
I would like response. Mahalo.
Uh, moving on to Mr. Brett Copis.
Can you hear me, Chair?
Yes, loud and clear.
Thank you. I didn't have, I didn't have no comments. I just wanted to thank the major, and I can't remember who was the major, and the captain and that's in the room. Thank you for your service to our country and keeping us safe. Mahalo.
Thank you, sir. And finally, we have Mr. Hicks. You have one moment, sir. One minute, excuse me.
Okay. Aloha. Chair members of the board. Uh, I just wanted to know, have you guys conducted like any census study amongst like the Eva Beach residents to actually get a number of, an accurate number of how this noise is affecting, um, the Eva Beach residents? And if you guys have not, um, I'm just wondering, would you guys be open in to that? Conducting, um, a, uh, like a census study to just get an accurate number of how many residents are affected? Because quite frankly, I actually, I'm, I'm an Eva Beach resident. I lived here my whole life, thirty-four years. This noise has been diabolical, you know, and like, um, Tita Rojas, Tara Rojas stated, you know, it's nothing like being waking up seven in the morning, feeling like you're in a, a, a warfare zone. You know what I mean? And so we are still being affected. I'm still being affected over here. And I'm at Hanakahi and Kawiki, and I hear the noise. I've heard it since I was a little boy. I'm thirty-four now. So, um, yeah, I just, you know, and like Tara Rojas says, this is illegally occupied territory. And please, please move this shooting range. Mahalo.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Seeing no one else online or in the meeting space. Does you have any final comments, sir?
I'll wait for any more questions.
I don't believe we have any more questions.
Okay. Yeah. So on Alpha Range, the sniper rifle fire, those weapon systems are currently suppressed and those are also the only weapon systems that operate on that range. That's a long distance range. The rifle fire that is currently done that you hear is on Bravo range and there are things in effect to suppress those weapons as well. We'll have more to update on that in the future. As far as the other questions, there are no current plans to move the range. As we've stated before, a lot of the, the current information that we've shared with you guys hasn't changed. Again, these are all planning documents to gather information. They're regularly conducted. And with this and the study done for the lead, it's all going to affect how we move forward.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Moving on to residents and community concerns and community announcements. Limited to one turn, two minutes per person. Concerns or comments of public safety and government officials should be addressed in the next section. In interest of time, please be brief with your questions or comments. If members of the community in the physical meeting space have a comment, please step up to the podium. State your name and whatever it is you want to talk about. Bueller? Bueller? I know I'm dating myself when I say that, but. No? Okay. Online, looks like we have three people. Okay, we will start with Neil Anthony Sims. You have two minutes. The floor is yours. Neil, are you muted? We can't hear you in the meeting space. Neil, we can't hear you. We'll come back to you. Moving on to Ms. Rojas, Tara, you have two minutes.
Aloha. My son would like to testify first. So his first two minutes and I'll testify right after. Please take notice. My name is Hedi Blanco, Sui Jurist, one of the people in branches as founding the trust agreement Hawaii Constitution, which was for oaths to uphold as servants and trustees. And I want to let this committee know that, that I come in peace. One, before I get started, I want to let you know, committee, that your internal policy or standard S O P two of two minutes does not apply to the people. As Caterer of Government, we are not subject to statutory jurisdiction. In matters that pertain to the people and this matter pertains to the people. Two, take notice, we, the people have all political power. We created the law as written in the U S Constitution and Hawaii's Constitution. And you're acting as soon, I'm your subordinate and I am not. It is exactly the opposite. Three, let me inform you that, or remind you that the Supreme Court of the U S has received lawful notices and they have heard recent cases and have, and have provide clarity and has affirmed the people's inherent rights. They also affirmed the role of servants who can be prosecuted criminally charged when they violate their oaths, operate outside the trust agreements. They have no immunity. If you believe that I am wrong, please show, please show us where it is written in the constitutions that granted you authority over the people showing you, showing you can trample over our rights and put a time limit on our ability to address remunstrances and redress for grievances. Take notice that, that take notice the constitutions are expressed trust agreements. If the provision is not there, you have no granted permission to do it. Five, there are none. You are not authorized to tell your boss, to tell your bosses, we, the people, that we are only allowed two minutes to testify. Servants are amenable to us at all times as written. Show word is written where service are amenable for a limited time, setting time limits on the people when they come seeking remedy. I is maladministration of violation of your oath, a felony breach of trust. Six, let me remind you as I sit here.
All right, your son's time has expired. Please respect the rules of the meeting or I will mute you. Moving on. Tara.
So my, my time, I would like to say two minutes is that.
Go ahead, Tara. You have two minutes.
Yeah, my concern is that we, the people of Hawaii are literally continuously being pushed out with again, the sewer fee increase, the homeowner fee increase, these affordable houses that are not affordable, the increased encroachment on land and water resources in a water crisis that is not finished and increased and continued, you know, the military occupation unlawfully, which includes the unlawful state of Hawaii and its derivative agencies. So we, the people, just as the community stood for Pohakupuna, need to stand not only what affects you personally, but as an island community. We live on an island. We drink the same water. We need the same land for resources and it's been eliminated through military occupation and contamination and overdevelopment. It cannot be business as usual. These wars need to shift and then we really need to, need to listen to the people. And just for the record, just to fix something as simple as like, you know, a traffic light, it's years in the making. You can look at it in the minutes. In for ten years, you can still talking about the issues with urban decay and urban issues, which this island is gonna turn into if nobody really connects the dots and sees the long term effects of overdevelopment. So we need to stand together as one for the sake of our island and our people. Mahalo.
Thank you, Tara. Appreciate you keeping that to two minutes. Next, we have Mr. Hicks, you have two minutes, sir.
Hello, aloha, Chair members of the board. I know that it was discussed back in January, where I believe about the sewage fee increase and how this increase will affect the whole island. I want to know, like, when will we start seeing the effects of this increase? Or has it already happened? Is there a date? And we also, I urge the board, we need to look at like how this will negatively impact the cost of living of, of locals, generational families who are actually from here. And on the City and County website, I saw that from October twenty third, it states how a proposed housing development could contribute to increase of sewage fees as the city is planning a ten year plan to raise sewer fees by one hundred and fifteen percent to fund race water infrastructure improvements and rising operational costs. Board, we need to also look at how these new project developments as well as housing developments is contributing to our storm drain fee increase, homeowner insurance fee increase, as well as our sewage fee increase and, and on our cost of living as a whole. And how these increases have already priced Hawaiians, locals and other generational families out of Hawaii. We really need to stop supporting all these projects and development plans because it will inevitably affect our families, both local and non-local. And I heard, I always hear politicians and senators talk about, oh, this will bring jobs to Hawaii, but who's Hawaii are we creating? Because by that statement and by looking at the rate of things, you know, you are encouraging locals to work like slaves to build a rich man's castle, a castle, a castle in which we locals and generational Hawaiians will not be able to afford, thus creating the conditions that will force us to leave. Furthermore, there was a statistic study from March fifteenth, twenty twenty two. It concluded that Hawaii had five hundred and fifty four thousand, one hundred and two total housing units in twenty twenty. Of those, only four hundred and seventy seven thousand, four hundred and eighty were occupied. So only seventy, so that left seventy six thousand, six hundred and twenty two thousand, six, seventy six thousand, six hundred and twenty two were vacant, giving the state a vacancy rate of thirteen point eighty three percent.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
That was two minutes.
That was two minutes. Yes. I would also like to remind you, I some of the points that you raise can be raised and directed towards the public safety and government officials in the following section. So when they come up to have their turn, please feel free to comment with them during that section. Thank you. Moving on to any other members of the community that would like to comment? Okay, I'm sorry. Susan, I just, I not Miss Gorman Chang, but we have a community member by the name of Susan. You have two minutes.
Well, thank you. And I'm not sure, I jumped in late. I'm not sure this is the right section for it, but I was wondering about the holdup of the maybe drain work right by Fort Weaver Bend going towards the park at the end. That have been there for a very long time. And what I do notice every day is that there's an off duty police officer who has to be there to watch whatever equipment. And I can't start to process how much it costs us taxpayers twenty four hours of this off duty officer for almost, I don't know, maybe two years now? Year and a half? It's quite tremendous. And I would like to know who's in charge of that project? Where is it progressing to? I mean, how are we managing it? Those are just some of the questions I have. Every time I see him, like, oh, no. It's, it started on a page where they started the asphalt. And then they, the asphalt was nice and clean and they brought out all these machines that started digging. And then it just stopped.
Okay.
And I guess I just want some kind of who knows about that project and can kind of enlighten us what's going on.
As I explained to Mr. Hicks before, we do have our city and county representatives that are here that could probably receive that question as, as well as members of the Department of Transportation. We also have a department, a transportation committee here on our neighborhood board of which Mr. Gauss is a member, and I think he can provide a quick update.
Yeah, and, and Susan, I just wanted to bring up that we actually, I actually brought that up last, at the last meeting and asked for clarification on that process as well. And so what, what we were told is that it was happening, it was, it was a major sewer burst, if you will, and that they, the part, those are old sewer lines and the parts were, had to be sent from the mainland. They don't make them anymore. And so they were waiting. But I believe at the last month, someone could correct me if I'm not, that, you know, it's their due like anytime. And so hopefully it's gonna be, you know, finished very soon. Like, I don't, I don't know when and we can ask when we get to that. When we get to the, uh, maybe the Department of Transportation, if we have a representative here, we can ask. And, but basically it sounds like it's, it's not going to be too much longer and I'm on the same page with you.
Thank you for those comments, Susan. Thank you, Board Member Gauss.
Can I just also add? I don't know, just a quick half a minute. I, I did the math. If, if an off duty officer is there twenty four hours for last year at just a rate of fifty dollars an hour, it has been four hundred thirty eight thousand dollars just to watch these equipments sit still. Could we have done and locked up those equipments somewhere else much better than having a police watch it day and night?
Thank you, Susan. Again, we'll have our council members or their representatives should be here later on in the meeting and you can direct those questions to them. I believe that's Councilmember Tupolis area? Or is that Augie's area?
Thank you.
Yeah, one of them. So, but they, they, they are the, are the representatives will be online. Moving on to Mr. Neil Anthony Sims. Are we able to hear you now, sir? Mr. Sims? Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now. Yes, you have two minutes.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you, Board Members. Representing Ocean Era Incorporated here, and we have been proposing an offshore aquaculture project for both Sish and Limu offshore of Ever Beach around near Oniula. I'd originally presented to the board in February twenty twenty one back in the COVID days, and then I've been there in person in September twenty twenty three to give a presentation. A distillation of those presentations is in the packet for the board members and it's publicly available through this year. What I would like to request of the board here now, through our conversations with Office of Conservation and Coastal Lands, when we're about to file the draft E A, they have requested that we get some indication from the neighborhood boards in the affected areas as to their disposition, whether they are supportive or agnostic towards this, or whether it's something that they would not endorse. And so what I'd like to request is that the board between now and the next meeting, if you could review that information, I'm happy to be there in person your next monthly meeting to be able to provide a very brief synopsis of that again, just to make folks familiar with that. And then I'd like to request for the board to take a position on our proposal for this offshore aquaculture project.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. So a little context here for some of the newer board members. This gentleman presented a few months ago, late last year, pretty informative, brief, very extensive, brief. He reached out to me before this board meeting and wanted to do another presentation again, asking that we give some sort of disposition. I didn't inform him that we were pretty much full up round on presentations already, but that he could bring it up during the residents and community residents and community concerns and that we could possibly put it on next month's agenda, if he could provide a more concise presentation than what he did before. And then we can take it up for discussion on what type of disposition we want to do at that time. So I could plan. Okay, Mr. Sims, we'll add you to the April agenda.
Thank you very much. Do appreciate it. Look forward to seeing you all then. Aloha.
Aloha. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we'll open up to board members that want to give a announcement or community concern, starting with Board Member Isaiah.
So we had a very tragic death in our community. Azalea Young Kavaa, seven. She passed away due to the injuries of a car, car accident. It's unimaginable tragedy when someone's life is taken from them so young and the pain that their family is feeling is very real and the community should feel that pain as well. And, you know, if you have children in your life, encourage them to wear a helmet. I know it messes their hair up. I know it's not the coolest thing. It's not the most comfortable, but it could save their life. And they need to be wearing helmets. Okay? For everybody who's driving, I know we all got somewhere to be, but the consequences of driving faster than we're supposed to or not paying enough attention could be the loss of the life of a seven year old. And this is horrible for our community. And I just want to spend the rest of the time I'm allotted for a moment of silence. I would hope we could all just think about her and her family and the loss that they're going through. I'll say a prayer for them. You can do the same if you like, but yeah, I'll, I'll yield the rest of my time to Azalea up in heaven.
Thank you, Board Member Isaiah. Appreciate those thoughts and our prayers. Definitely go out to the family. We have one more board member that would like to make a community announcement. Mr. Plowman, floor is yours for two minutes.
Thanks, Chair. Finally, have secured a, a location and a date for a Military Affairs Committee meeting April twenty fourth, and it's going to be right there in the Ever Library. And I would encourage folks who are somewhat frustrated sometimes with having to deal with the full schedule, full agenda that limits our time, we'll be able to talk about these things that that are important to us for up to three hours, just military affairs stuff. So I encourage the folks that want to speak to that and chew on some of these issues in a less compacted. in a less compacted situation. So I hope to see as many people there. I am adding my email address if anybody wants to be on the committee. Fire me an email if you have an idea for an agenda item, please include that. And with that, I'll leave it at one minute. Yield my time to the next concerned citizen. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Mike. So to reiterate, what was the date again?
Sorry, 24 April, so it'll be two weeks after the next neighborhood board meeting.
So it's on a Thursday. Same bat time, same bat channel?
Same bat time, same bat channel. Thank you.
And an agenda will be sent out approximately one week before then?
I think it runs on the same timing as the board meetings.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to other monthly reports, limited to three minutes per report. Follow up questions and answers and comments limited to one turn, one minute per person, beginning with Hunt Communities Update, and I believe Tony sent his regrets, saying that he will not be able to join us tonight. Until next time. Gentry Homes, do we have a member from Gentry Homes online? Seeing none? Hoseko Holmes, do we have a Hoseko Holmes representative in the meeting space or online?
Hi, everybody. Sorry, I don't have a report for you guys today, no updates, but I'm here.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it. D.R. Horton Hoopili, any representative with an update? Seeing none? Okay, that closes out that section. Moving on to government officials, limited to three minutes per report. Follow up questions and answers and comments limited to one turn, one minute per person, one turn, one minute per person. Beginning with United States Marine Corps Base Hawaii Duty Officer. I think you went over by one minute in your presentation, so we're gonna subtract a minute.
Unless there's anything else pending, I think I'll just take questions. That was what we had for today.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Board Member Gauss?
Sorry, Mitch over here was tapped my ear. No, I just didn't hear, did you talk about the the potential for the construction of a baffle wall on the West Side? I missed that. If you spoke about, are there any plans to do that?
I don't know of anything official as far as whether it's been released or anything like that, but I can see if there's been any planning considerations or anything like that to bring back.
Again, so I just want to go back to my comment about like, that has been spoken about for years, and so we hear about the Marines and wanting to be good neighbors and like, you know, I know that there's this whole thing about moving the range and, you know, obviously, there's still people that are pushing for that and things like that, but in the, regardless of whether that happens or not, you know, I think trying to, you know, limit the impact of noise to the people that live directly to the range should be a priority just because that's one of the main issues that's always been brought up for years and years and years. And so I think it would be, you know, a good faith effort from the Marine Corps that at least push forward on that measure, which is fairly simple in the larger scheme of things, so that would be my, if you can push that up the chain somehow, that'd be, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and the Marine Corps recognizes that as well. So we all know there's a couple of options that we're looking at. We'll have an update on some of the things that we have moved forward on and what we're considering.
I'm gonna dovetail in Board Member Gauss's comment. Going back a year or two years ago, that's pretty much how the Marine Corps base really came into focus here was the new giant voice that was installed, and it was really loud. There were a lot of comments from the community, but I think it was the Marine Corps's pushback that they weren't listening very well. They're like, you know, this is what we have to do, we're gonna do it this way. And then as things sort of percolated up the chain, the chain of command, the aperture was open a little bit more, then there seemed to be a bit more of an exchange. So to Alex's point, you know, maybe increasing the level of importance on it, especially since it's been talked about for quite some time. Board Member Mitch?
I guess I might say one comment, you know, that I guess it was brought up about the TCHL building some Hawaiian homes in the tsunami inundation, I mean, the tsunami place. But not only they got a note, I mean, let the homeowners know that is an active firing range, but you also gotta let them know that we get, you're in the flight path of the planes. I mean, I know people on the West Side, like my, one of my, when I was growing up, my my sister's boyfriend was, you know, grew up on Ely, never knew about the planes and stuff. First time come over our house, I was a beach here, got scared, never know what that was. I just, you know, planes flying over, but, you know, being, you know, people that coming to our community that's new about it, they need to know. Or they're gonna be more on comments about and concerns about being, oh, I never know about this, or, you know, just yeah, just more complaints coming across. So if we're gonna build more homes, Hawaiian homes, or any type of homes, and people coming into our community, they need to be notified as well of not only the active shooting range, but as the flight paths and our Monopole trucks just everything in our community, so I just wanted to bring that up real quick. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cobus, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was wondering if the captain had any information on the Blue Angels coming? Or where I can go to find out?
Yes, so we are planning the 2025 Air Show. It is on the website for MCCS. It is also on our website, Marine Corps Base Hawaii website. As the planning has been going on, we have confirmed that Blue Angels will be showcasing. There is a public advisory on our website announcing that as well. So if you go to the website, you'll be able to find more information on that.
Can you give us insight, which month?
Oh, so it's, it's gonna be in August, August 8th, I believe. And that's gonna be over the weekend, there's gonna be like two days, and then a Military Appreciation Day as well. So you can come out in August, plan for it, it's gonna be busy, one of the largest events held in Hawaii, so we look forward to seeing all of you there.
Cool. And I'd just like to point out, they will be doing their practices over Ever Beach, so we get to see the air show early, so it's pretty cool. All right, moving on, United States Navy. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Semper Fi. Aloha, Dunna.
Aloha, everybody. Aloha, Chair, Board Members. Thanks again for the opportunity, friends and neighbors. A quick update from Navy Closure Task Force, not really much new to talk about, much like last month. Seven and eight are finished pressure washing. We're waiting for the regular, the regulators to get in there and inspect, make sure we've got clean surfaces on those two tanks. And those two tanks will be certified once we get through that regulation process, which we're, this is all brand new, we've never been, the tanks have been cleaned before, but not to this degree for closure, which is important, I guess, for us to remember that it's an environmental thing and a challenge that we're up against. We did start the degassing on the third set of tanks, which are tanks three and four. They're starting degassing, you can see the AQM, the air quality monitoring is going on during the daylight hours when these tanks are are being vented, basically to make them safe to enter, which starts the next cycle. Oh, let's see, we had a very successful open house last night, we had quite a few people come over to the Kehe Lagoon. Dr. Lau, some members of the CRI, we had Bernie Lau showed up, Border Water showed up. A pretty good showing, not as many as we'd like, but we always hope for more. The, I guess the last thing I wanted to remind everybody, on our website and on the app, if you've got an app, you can track all the latest news and all the events from Navy Closure Task Force. But with that, I want to introduce Jose, he's a good friend of ours. Jose's a leading chief for Navy Region Hawaii, and he'll be joining us every month to give the Navy's update for the updates.
Sure, people problems. Aloha and good evening, everyone. I'm MCC Jose Jain, that is spelled J-O-S-E, J-A-E-N. And I'm the Media Operations SEA over at Navy Region Hawaii, doing, I think, for that introduction. Several items that I have to share with you this evening is our weekly newsletter, The Modello, is released every Wednesday. If you'd like to be added to that this show, I'd be more than happy to get your information, to get you on there. Essentially, this newsletter highlights Navy stories and items of interest in Hawaii. Monthly ship tours is very exciting, we kicked that back off last month. We have, give me one second here, sorry about that. We have on 5th April, we have the USS Carl M-11, DDG 120. 12 April, we have the USS Decatur, DDG 73. 19 April, USS Shiloh, CG 67. 26 April, USS Frankie Peterson Jr. These are, this is a great opportunity, if you haven't been on the ship, I strongly recommend it. You get to see what sailors do in the flesh, right, in person. It's on Saturday, starts at nine in the morning, approximately finish around 11:00 in the morning, so you'll be out of there in and out, and it'll be a good experience. So please do sign up, get me that information if you want to sign up for that. If not, we'll be doing the monthly, okay? Community white boats, we also offer that, that's once a month, however. It's a tour over to the USS Arizona Memorial and Pearl Harbor Tour, strongly recommend it if you haven't done that either. Last but not least, La Lima Navy 2025. Proud to, well, proud and happy to share that we're upward of 105 acts of community service. The goal is to do 250 by October of this year, and I'm confident that we'll be able to exceed that towards October, if you may know, 250 years of the Navy, so, ooh yeah, and stand by for any questions. Thank you for the opportunity.
Any questions from members of the board? Board Member Gauss?
Yeah, thanks for the updates there. So I'm curious, I've asked this before, are there any updates on the kayak commute lane crossing Pearl Harbor and if and when that might open? Which is a pretty, I don't think it is as of right now, I could be wrong, because now it's been closed for so long, I don't even go and check anymore, and so I'm wondering, that was a pretty important route for a lot of people crossing, including myself, and yeah, who cares, there's an update on that.
We'll get, we'll get the best details for you, in fact, I'll follow up with an email, so you won't have to wait till next month. I do know that they've still secured because of the octakorall, and that's the issue right now. So what we'll do is try to get you a good timeline, or at least explain what's going on. We can even try to get some of the NAFAC environmentalists out here for a brief if you'd like. So we'll take it offline and see if we can set that up, ready?
Thank you. A couple of questions for the chief. He gave us two acronyms, MCC and SEA.
So MCC, sorry about that, Chief Mass Communication Specialist, that's MCC, and SEA is Senior Enlisted Advisor.
Whoa, thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. See no other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you. Moving on to United States Army Duty Officer. Is, do I hear a whoa? Seeing none? Okay. Moving on to US Representative Ed Case Quarterly Report, I believe Nestor, you are online, sir?
Chairman Clark, members of the board, those who are in the audience live and those who are viewing online. Chairman Clark, thank you for the opportunity. For the record, Nestor Garcia, Communications Director for Congressman Ed Case. Chairman, I put the link to his first quarter report in the chat, can you read it at your leisure? Obviously, we are most concerned about the vote that's supposed to happen tomorrow. As those of you who know and have followed what is happening, Capitol Hill, there's a little matter of a deadline coming up. Whether or not there might be a government shutdown, if the vote doesn't work out.
We can bear that. Can you speak up just a little bit?
Okay, hold on, sir, see if I can pump it up a little bit. Then we're mostly concerned, Mr. Chairman, with the vote that should occur, hopefully, tomorrow in the United States Senate to try to avert a government shutdown. As you know, that the House had already passed a continuing resolution that will fund the federal government until the end of September 2025. We're keeping one eye on that, of course, we are also keeping an eye on what else is happening as the President tries to reshape the federal government in his vision. As you may have heard, there have been a number of staff cuts and funding clawbacks. And so we're trying to get a sense of exactly what the impact will be on our state. With that, Mr. Chairman, members, open to any questions you might have.
Any questions from members of the board in the physical meeting space? Seeing none? Any questions from members of the board online?
Yes.
Mr. Plowman?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Mr. Garcia, thank you for your time. I'm seeing numbers like $1.2 billion that Representative Cases helped bring to the islands. And I've also seen a lot of hundreds of millions of dollars being spent on tearing down workable hangars at Kanioe and just rebuilding them. I understand missions have changed slightly, but that's a lot of money to be tearing stuff down and rebuilding it when we've got a need, as Dr. Gauss has brought up a couple of times tonight, for like seven years, we've been promised noise mitigation features at PRTF. Just like to have you relay that to the Congressman, please, and I'm also, my question is, has the Marine Corps asked for any money for PRTF for any projects recently? Thank you.
Mike, I'll have to get back to you on that to see whether or not your specific question regarding pool law.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
John Rogers?
I did want to see if Mr. Garcia had any more information on exactly what kind of funding, federal funding that we have, we know that we've already lost. So I know it's, there's a lot of stuff going on, but there's any specifics that we can just understand as a community that will affect us?
Mr. Rogers, that question was put to me by another neighborhood board that had actually wanted me to sit in on their, on their session tonight, but I opted obviously forever, since this is my jurisdiction. It's hard to quantify, Mr. Rogers, exactly what we are dealing with here. And I use the example of the University of Hawaii president, she had a two hour public forum today, you should watch that, to see what effects and impacts this will have on the University of Hawaii system. But she said exactly what I would say, is that it's very hard to quantify because the changes come almost hour by hour, Mr. Rogers, I'm not kidding. The changes almost come hour by hour. So it's like a moving target as far as trying to quantify exactly the the amount of funding, the exact figures that we're dealing with. But as you know, and it's been covered extensively by the media, the cuts are wide and they're deep. As you know, they've cut what, the Department of Education by half, the staffing? 20% cuts to the IRS. What is it, $70,000, $70,000 staffing cuts to the Department of Veterans Affairs? Which comes to, close to my heart, since I handle the Veterans Portfolio. So I know, I want to know what kind of cuts are being happening to the VA here in Hawaii, both in healthcare and in benefits. And we tried to get that word from the representatives for the VA here in Hawaii, but our meeting was canceled suddenly for some reason. So yeah, we're trying to get that quantified for you and for all of the people of Hawaii. And as we get a better understanding, get our arms around what these cuts actually mean for us.
Thank you, Nestor. Any questions from members of the community? Seeing none in the physical meeting room? Mr. Cobus, you are recognized, you have one minute, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask if there's any update to the status of the Jones Act Amendment that the representative was pushing through with the bipartisan one? If there's any movement on that?
Yes, Mr. Cobus, thank you. Bipartisan measure, also introduced by Republican Congressman from Guam, Mr. James Moyle. Now, the measure has been introduced, but we have yet to have a hearing scheduled on that. And of course, we'll update you and all of Hawaii should that measure finally move through Congress and at least get a discussion about why it's so important, not just for Hawaii, but for those jurisdictions that are outside of the mainland. Guam, Alaska, Puerto Rico, the Virgin Islands, and all these other territories that rely on shipping, yeah? For most of the goods that come to their people.
Thank you, Mr. Cobus. Thank you, Nestor. See no other questions? Good evening, Nestor.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Moving on to Mayor Rick Blangardi's representative. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair, Board Members, Mark Udomine, representing Mayor Blangardi. One announcement I do have is the mayor's State of the City speech is next week, Tuesday. is next week, Tuesday, uh, March eighteenth at six PM. And it'll be televised, so please tune in. Other than that, I will take any questions you may have.
Any questions from members of the board in the physical meeting room? Seeing none? Surprising. Uh, members online? Members of the board online? Okay, moving on to community members in the physical meeting space. Any questions for the mayor's representative? Seeing none? Moving on online.
That, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Colbus. Go ahead.
I had my hand up, I think. I have just a quick question. I uh, I know the uh, the city council is working on the budget. I tried watching some of those meetings, but fell asleep during them. Uh, can you let me know what the uh, if the mayor has offered uh some more money to the HPD so that they can hire more officers to protect us?
You know, I don't have that information with me, but I can get back to you on as far as if there's any increases to uh HPD's budget.
Thank you, Mr. Colbus. Thank you, Deputy Director.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Moving on to District One, Councilmember Andrea Tupola.
Hi, Aloha Chair, Aloha Board members. Thank you very much for the time. I um first wanted to respond to Mr. Colbus's question. We are in budget hearings. And so this is just a very introductory portion of the mayor and the administration's budget. And for the public's information, this past year, HPD gave back fifty million dollars. So they have plenty of money. They've been using some of it to allocate it towards vehicles. But as you know, they're short four hundred and thirty five officers, which is why there is so much money being lapsed. I have encouraged the chief to use that money for retention bonuses, for training, for recruitment, for marketing. There are many ways that that money can be used besides just giving it back to the general fund. We know that it's dangerous when we don't have a complete staffed district. We also know that it's dangerous for the officers to not have that kind of backup. So we did have a lengthy conversation about it, and I I am hoping to actually see some amendments to the budget. But again, we're only at the very beginning of it. So we'll be adding amendments each of the council members. And then as well, we'll go through uh one more iteration after that. Aside from that, I do know there was questions about the sewer in fees, the sewer uh increase bill. And I am opposed to it. I ha- I will be submitting a CD. If you guys want to track it, it's Bill sixty. So the ENV or the Environmental Services is not allowed to increase fees without a vote at the council. They are suggesting to increase the fees nine percent for the next ten years. But we are going to be amending that bill. There's no council member that's in favor of the nine percent, although we are sympathetic to the fact that we need infrastructure upgrades. So if you want to track that, it's Bill sixty. Lastly, on March twenty ninth, we'll be helping Ruona Village with the cleanup. And we want to thank Agnes Malate for helping us to organize that. I'm open for questions.
Any question from members of the board in the physical space? Former McGals?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Tupola for showing up. Always appreciated. Um, so I'm just curious on the bill that you spoke about with the with the the increases. And I can, I'll I'll definitely track it. But are you, what are you guys thinking as far as uh recommending as far as increase? I'm sure you're gonna still uh, you know, recognize that they do need some fees. What are you putting forward? Can you speak to that at all?
Yeah, I'm gonna be putting in amendment to put two percent increase. And hopefully, we can actually put a two percent where they can do it at any year without our permission because the two percent increase is reasonable. But knowing that the city is lapsing sixteen percent of a three point eight three billion dollar budget. And when I say the word lapse, that means that's funds they're not using. So we're well aware that there are funds there. And so we've talked kind of, you know, caught like between each other, but not through a bill yet, that there is quite a bit of money that the administration can find. But also, there is a one point eight three billion dollar um part of the the money that they're trying to increase that's related to a consent decree. And we could easily ask, I'm not saying they would give it, but ask the EPA to consider an integrated plan instead of what they had required us to do in twenty ten. So today, I asked the director, hmm, it might have been seven times in a row if he was gonna ask the EPA. We have a new administration. There is a chance that what they recommended in twenty ten is not their same recommendation today. That would save us one point eight billion dollars. So I always say you don't ask, you don't get. We really want to see the director and the administration ask more to the federal government of what needs to be complied with instead of just assuming it and then, of course, burdening the taxpayer.
I have a follow on question related to that. Uh, you mentioned um the lapsed funds. So I believe it's in the state constitution that when the state has an overbundance or lapsed funds, they have to return it to the taxpayers, correct?
I don't know if that's a law. I don't think it is either. They lapsed quite a bit of funds.
Oh, okay. I may be incorrect then. Okay. Um, so there's no likelihood that that money will be returned to the taxpayers, though?
Well, I know on the city side, we did ask because for everyone's clarification, this past year due to valuations, that means the cost of your home. It went up without you knowing, and then you paid more taxes. Well, guess how much extra tax money was collected? Forty five million. So we asked them, what are you gonna do with the extra forty five million? They said, oh, we're putting it back into the general fund. Like, it would be nice to know with all of these lapsed funds, fifty million from HPD, forty five million um for property tax, that all of that extra money, is that gonna go towards the wastewater fee? Why are we additionally asking for more money for fees if we have lapsed money? So for those of you who want more clarification, I can give you the documents. If you want to call my office, I can give you the budget documents to look at.
That's an outstanding point that they could just simply reprogram the money, right? In theory.
In theory, in theories.
Okay. Uh, okay. Uh, no questions seen from members of the board. Uh, we'll move on to members of the community on in the physical meeting space. Seeing none? Mr. Hicks, you have one moment.
Yeah, I just want to say mahalo for um um in regards to the sewage fee increase and and um I I do want to get your perspective on the, I believe, is the Atlantis proposal. And how if your office or city and county has looked at the correlation between the magnitude of these developments and how they contribute to, you know, the sewage fee increase, um storm drain fee increase, homeowner insurance increase, and what are your thoughts and um perspectives on the magnitudes of these developments as well as the um UH West Oahu um proposal that we heard tonight?
Um, I would say that if you're talking about Atlantis in Ko'olina, is that correct?
Affirmative, yes.
Okay, um, I will say that years ago, I want to say it might have been twenty years ago, that Ko'olina was master planned to have X amount of hotels in that parcel in between where the Marriott Clubhouses in O'Leary has sat vacant. So the reason why it sat vacant is because the company that they did business with was from China. And they had um some grand ideas, some of them included live animals. And there is a lot of protest about what that hotel was gonna look like. Long story short, Jeff Stone, who's been, um, you know, the owner of that area, trying to get that last hotel program according to the master plan, was able to finally do business with an American company with a hotel that is solvent, that wants to do business here. So it was a better deal for them as far as like making sure that it was staying within the US. But I will say that that was the last hotel that was master planned in there. So the Ko'olina area in itself had already had the capacity to have that there. Um, I will say that in regards to like wastewater capacity and whatnot, UH West Oahu, um, I didn't hear the presentation tonight, but I have known a lot of the plans that they've had to expand their campus. So I I don't know exactly what it was, but I will say that for a very long time, they were hoping to expand some housing along by where the rail line is between UH West Oahu and um the North South Road. So some of those things had been planned in, but you're right. I mean, infrastructure, can it handle it? I do think that in that area of Hono, um, Hono Ululi, kind of right where Ho'opili is, that there was always plans to have more housing there as far as if the infrastructure had been installed first or that if we're trying to catch up, the answer is we're trying to catch up. I I'm actually, the one thing that I really, really am kind of bummed and and not happy about is they should have built the schools already. So we are way overdue for that high school and Ho'opili has to build it, but the DOE has been kind of dragging their feet. And of course, we're waiting for the elementary. They built the middle school. So I I know that there's other infrastructure like wastewater that's important, but for me, we've been overdue for a new high school in that area for a very, very long time.
And uh, two more. Uh, members of the audience, uh, councilmember, uh, starting with Brent Colbus. Yeah, one minute, sir.
Thank you, uh, Chair. Thank you, uh, represent or Councilwoman Tupola. Uh, I see that the uh, that the 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 mayor's asking for a five billion dollar budget. It's more than he than him before. Seventeen percent goes to first responders and stuff. Do you know of that? If that, I mean, you just said they didn't use fifty million. I mean, it sounds like there's a lot more money that they they have lapsed that they could be sorting through to drop that budget down, but that's a different story. Second question quickly is, does the Department of Sewer and and the water, do they have a maintenance plan? You know, you always see that things are falling apart and nothing seems to be fixed until it's an emergency and the people end up getting getting the short end of the stick. And then the last question, uh, it was just reported that the DOE is getting ready to close schools. How is that gonna affect them building the the promised schools in Ho'opili? Thank you.
Um, so first question in regards to the budget, the city budget right now being proposed is three point eight three billion. So it's less than the five, but it is more than last year. You're correct there. Um, the amount of money that gets lapsed in that budget is sixteen percent of it. So every department lapses money and it's always due to vacancies. So yes, there could be some different budgeting, and that's why we go through the budgeting process so that we can kind of interject and suggest some better spending and some better budgeting. Secondly, um, your question, I think it was in regards, oh gosh, I can't remember the second question. Uh, was it about
Sewage ma- sewage and water maintenance plans to
Yeah, so
keep our infrastructure up to date.
I would say that they have plans. I think the thing that hasn't been keeping up is the the fees to pay for that. So over the past four years that uh Mayor Bongiardi's been in, they haven't increased it at all. Then I think during Mayor Caldwell's times, they didn't increase it at all. And then I think for a couple of years prior to that, so I think for those ten something years that it wasn't increased, yes. They weren't um able or keeping up with the maintenance plan. So was there a plan? Yes. Was it being funded regularly? No. And I think that's what needs to change. And your third question, is there a maintenance plan?
DOE is reported that they're closing schools. And obviously, Ho'opili hasn't, the high school hasn't been built there, the elementary school.
I can say that the unilateral agreement between Ho'opili and the city is that those parcels will never be used for houses. So those three parcels will always be dedicated to a school, but I'll let any of the state reps and state senators answer the question about schools being closed and prioritizing the ones that we need, um, especially at Ho'opili. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Brett. Moving on to Ms. Ross. You have one minute.
Mahalo Nui for that, for speaking up for the opposing that super high increase. And I just want to mahalo you, and I wanted to uh mention that the process is flawed. Because I went to today, the Salt Lake District Park, nobody showed up, only I showed up. So it's like the process is flawed. Supposedly, the sewer fee increase started in November. But just so happened, they came to our neighborhood board meeting in February. So I don't know what other neighborhood board meetings they went to. Even at that, people don't attend the neighborhood board meetings, you know? So this whole process in that they consulted the community, it's gonna be flawed because they said they held it, but nobody shows up. So that's one issue. Uh, two, I'm glad you're speaking up against it because if it's not somebody in these positions, it just gets overlooked and things get passed through. And I'm glad you did your, you know, your research and sharing with us about the extra money that is available that they can pull from because we are being taxed. You know, and our our monies are being used and we are telling the elected officials to not use it, and it still pushes, for example, like the salary increase, you know? So it is time of of scarcity.
Question for the councilmember?
Yeah, so I wanted to know that, you know, what, how can we improve this process that's been in place for far too long? That is not efficient, salary commission, you know, these overdevelopment and everything.
Councilmember, you may respond.
Yeah, I will say that I agree. I mean, I even had to find out very last minute about the sewer fee increase meeting in my own district because I wasn't told ahead of time. I think that it is part of the public process is that they have to have these open meetings. But I would agree with you that they're not very well publicized, they're not well attended, which means that the majority of people don't get their voices heard. So please just track Bill sixty. So despite all their meetings, we still as councilmembers get to vote on what the increase is. So track Bill sixty and then follow along with that and testify in those hearings. Thank you, Chair.
Mahalo, councilmember. Appreciate you showing up. Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Augie Toba, District Nine.
Thank you, Chair, guys. Can you hear me?
Uh, just barely. If you could speak up a little bit, that'd be good.
Sorry, sorry about that. Uh, uh, first off, I echo everything that my colleague, uh, Councilmember Tupola and your concerns about the cost of sewer feed. And please know that we are aligned and we will do whatever we can to make sure that we um we do things fair. Okay, so and she did, she covered a lot on the tax uh on on the budget. So thank you, Andrea, for doing that. I'm gonna talk about meeting with the Department of Transportation and some of the upcoming projects that will benefit ever. So on uh Kapole Parkway and Taiuka Street adjacent to Santera, uh Federal Highway Administration grant monies are currently slated for safety improvements at the intersections, plans still to be designed on Ke'onui Drive and Kaulaka Drive. A work order was issued for installation of an all way stop at the intersection on Ka'olau Way based on Hawaii uh Honolulu Fire Department assessment. Parking will be restricted at four corners of the eastern leg of Ka'olau Way. On Hanukai Street, designs for raised crosswalks between Honolulu uh Street and Kauiki Street are ninety percent complete. A construction timeline to be determined uh after plans are complete. And on Ke'onui Drive, uh, at Papaw Street at Friendship Bible Baptist Church, DTS is in the consultant selection process for a new planned traffic signal. And I got a word about the sewer work on Fort Weaver. Um, they're looking at wrapping up things in June. Uh, I want to remind everybody that this Saturday from nine AM till about eleven, we are doing a North Road cleanup. Um, if you want to come on and uh help out the community, I'll be there at nine AM to eleven with my team. So uh, with that, Chair, I will take questions.
Thank you, councilmember. Appreciate it. Um, any questions from the board present in the room? Board members online? All right, we'll open it to the public. Anyone here in the audience? Online? Brett, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilman Toba for all the work you're doing and Councilman, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Tupola. I'm sorry, I gave all my hard questions to the form, the first councilmember, but I I did save one for you. Uh, as everybody knows, you know, the federal government is rolling back a lot of stuff. Uh, is there any, did we get all the money that the Department of Transportation offered us or promised us for the rail? Uh, and what is, what, what is the, does the rail have a plan as far as the opera, how they're gonna pay for the operational expenses? You know, I've seen the the numbers of ridership since since they opened the Little Spur. And I actually did see the rail going down towards uh the uh Middle Street uh section down there earlier this month. Uh, so if you can just maybe talk about what what's going on with the rail and, you know, is there, do they have a plan? Because I don't see one.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the question. We did uh have a briefing with heart and they assured us that uh, the monies from the federal government will be coming in increments. Um, as they move forward, uh, and they seem very optimistic and uh very transparent. So, you know, we're hoping that uh we'll see more rail, so more people can uh start helping us and uh and start riding it. But I will definitely keep everyone informed as we work through the project process and getting more briefings with heart. But yes, uh, they were very confident that we are getting the rest of the funds.
Thank you, councilmember. Questions from members of the board? Um, former McGals? Oh, yeah, we, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, Oh, yeah, we, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, do you have a question? Board Member Tananis?
Uh, Councilmember, um, I just found out from Councilmember Tupola that HPD gave back 50 million, um, back to the general fund. Is there any, test, test, is there any, um, I guess the, any way to keep, not only, I know you asked a question about recruitment in the budget hearing with the chief.
Yeah.
And, um, they were talking about 50% was friends and family. Then you asked about social media, he gave a brief percentage about 20, 25%. But with that 50 million going back to the general fund, is there anything way to, the HPD can hold it for like retention, signing bonuses? Uh, cause I know a lot of HPD officers, you know, they, they, they leave here and go to another state where it's higher pay. And I think we should be using that money or if possible to not only keep our guys for retention, but offer to draw in more, um, I guess officers from out of state if we're short. I know it, everybody's short Army Navy, they're all having their way, um, to try to recruit, but I mean, 50 million, I mean, we could, HPD could do a lot with that.
I, uh, 100% agree. I think that's one of the big questions that, uh, Councilmember Tupola put out is that, yeah, we're doing all of these great bonuses, but I think we have to have a plan for retention. You know, I'd like to see a lot of these retired police officers, uh, in our schools as a way to lead by example. It's one of the things that, um, she also addressed. So yeah, you know, um, the same concerns you have and, you know, uh, I have. And, you know, yes, I would like to see police officers get a little more at how we can keep them with retention.
Okay, council member, we have one more comment from a member of the community, Mr. Hicks. You have the floor for one minute.
Hello, Councilman, mahalo Nui for all you do. Um, I don't know, did I hear that, um, there's going to be a construction of, um, a crosswalk near Hanakai and Kauiki, uh, intersection?
Yeah, yeah, raised crosswalk, but no, it's, uh, Hanakai Street, uh, between Honolulu and Kauiki, yes. It's 99%, uh, 99% complete and construction timeline to be determined after plans are complete, so.
Okay, I would, I would actually request like if we could get one near Hanakai and Kauiki, um, a crosswalk over there. Also possibly a speed bump, there's a lot of excessive speeding on Hanakai, um, especially near that area. Um, if you guys want to look into that.
Can you, can you send me an email?
Um, yes, sir. I'll send you an email.
Appreciate it. Yep.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions? Thank you, council member. Appreciate your service, sir.
Aloha.
Moving on to Board of Water Supply. Kelson, you online?
Uh, Kelson's not here, but I'm subbing in for him today.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate you. Flow is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Chris Givoto from the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. I would like to share my report with us. Perfect. So, uh, the main break report, there was a one water main break, uh, last month. It was on February 3rd. It was an eight-inch main and the address was 91-1500 Lululeu. And it was installed in 2018. Uh, to make sure our water announcements, uh, it's about BWS is hiring. So, um, thirsty for a stable career, the BWS is hiring. Uh, we have open positions in engineering, IT, customer care and administrative roles. Uh, enjoy great benefits, job security and the opportunity to grow and make a difference. It's time to turn the valve on a new career that matters. Uh, you can apply today at www dot boardwatersupply dot com, board slash jobs, or call 808-748-5160. I'll stay at my report, see if anyone have any questions or comments for BWS.
Question or comments from members of the board? Seeing none in the physical space, any online? Seeing none? Any questions or concerns from members of the community? Seeing none? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, mahalo, everyone.
Moving on to Hawaii Department of Education. Other than Mrs. Clark, are there any members of the Department of Education that would like to speak here? Okay. Uh, moving on to Governor Josh Green's representative, Tara, are you, or someone?
Yes, good evening. I do not have an update at this time, um, but I will definitely be available for questions. You can certainly, um, put something in the chat also. Um, getting back to the DOE, I just want to mention, um, I work for the, um, Executive Office on Early Learning, which is administratively attached to the DOE. So although I am not part of the DOE, if there are any concerns or any way that I can, um, reach out to somebody that might be able to help, I will certainly do my best to do that. Um, go ahead, Josh.
Okay, can you see me on camera?
I can, I can see you. Yes, you look shocked.
Because, you know, from your first day here, we greatly appreciated your, uh, and your, your reception, what shall I say, uh, of my request that
Yes.
The superintendent, the complex area superintendent, uh, attend, I, I don't know, at some frequency, you know, once a year, once a quarter. Uh, he had not been to one since I think maybe one or two when he first came on board, uh, in place of Ms. Heidi Armstrong, Deputy Superintendent, who attended, uh, probably 99% of the meetings. So whatever you can do to influence them, you know, we, our schools are important here. Um, and so we would like to see, we would like to see them here, so.
I, I agree, although I can't certainly do what I can, so. But I will also put my email address in the chat if anybody has any questions, um, that I can pass along either to Governor Green's team or hopefully to someone at DOE.
Okay. Thank you. I really do appreciate that, Tara. Any questions from members of the board, either in the physical space or online? Anyone from the community? Seeing none? Thank you, Tara. We appreciate you. Moving on to Hawaii Department of Transportation Quarterly Report. Do you like, do you like, seeing no one, moving on to our elected officials. Senate District 19, Senator Henry Aquino?
Hello, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board, um, Nathanae Esa representing Senator Aquino this evening. Um, Chair, I did email you, uh, my reports, uh, this afternoon. Um, I do stand by my report and that being, with that being said, that is my final report as well. Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments from board members, physical space or virtually? Seeing none? Members of the community? Seeing none? Thank you. Appreciate it. Senate District 20, Senator Kurt Favella and Oyebu. Oh, time's up. No, just joking.
Hello, my name is Morgan Star England and I am Senator Favella's new legislative aide. I just wanted to go review some of the things that we've been doing. So the first thing is the James Campbell High School Athletic Complex groundbreaking that occurred on 6 March. They officially broke ground for the new boys and girls locker room concession stand and bleachers that will seat up to 3,000 people. Next, they had the James Campbell High School pause for pause on 22 February where there was free micro-tripping, custom name tags, and just people to talk to about pets. Third is that we had the, um, we had gone over to MCBH for the tour and to also commemorate the flag, um, the flying of the Hawaiian flag. That was actually the first base to fly the Hawaiian flag, so that's pretty cool. Hopefully Hiccup can follow. Next, we had our MAD press conference, which is the Mothers Against Drunk Driving. Um, it was to support our bills, um, Senate Bill 1643. Next, we had the sign waving for Ola Casinos, which was to fight against Senate Bill 893, which is to introduce casinos to the Aloha Stadium District and the Hawaii Convention Center. Um, later on, it was actually deferred in committee. Lastly, we had the Day at the Capitol event that was hosted by the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. Our goal is to have better understanding to support our people with those disabilities. We had the Goodwill Hawaii stop by our office to talk about, um, issues pertaining to availability of universal changing tables and public accommodations. And later on, we're able to successfully submit a resolution to address that issue. Lastly, we have our Eva Beach Lions Club Annual Easter Bash that is on 19 April at Alema Intermediate. It is from, uh, registration is at 9:00 AM and it, the event is from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It's going to be the Easter Bunny Door prizes and the egg hunts for kids 0 to 15. I am open for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from members of the board? None in the physical meeting space, none online? I have a quick question. I, and I don't remember, I was in the, I was in my kitchen and the television was on. But I thought I remember hearing something about, uh, potential, uh, allowance for gambling online, because, you know, it's illegal to gamble in the state, but you also can, since you can't gamble in the state, you can't gamble online either. Um, do you know anything about that? Have you heard anything about that?
I know that we were trying to pass a bill earlier and, uh, it didn't get passed, but it was to, um, it was for online gambling specifically, but it was to, I guess, sorry, it was such a long time ago, I'm trying to remember, but it was to, um, impose kind of like some fun or, um, fees for online gambling users to, so you could register to online gamble, so that was kind of in the works, but already didn't get passed. Sorry, I don't.
No, no, no.
I don't know anything about that, but I can definitely look into it.
Yeah, this was fairly recently, actually, so, um, so I guess the, the thought or the theory is to allow online gambling, but not, uh, physical gambling here on, on, in the islands.
I've heard some talks about that for sure.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Uh, seeing no questions from board members? Any members of the community for questions for Senator Favella or his rep? Mr. Cobus, you have the floor for one minute, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, you're referring to HB 1308, which passed out of the CPT and another committee to EBT and CPT Committee today. Uh, that's the online gambling vote with, uh, all the senators voting yes or yes with reservations. Specifically for Senator Favella's rep there. Thank you for, please pass on my thanks to the Senator for supporting the, uh, Convention of States Resolution, SR 158 and SJR 140. Uh, I look forward to seeing him in the committee hearing next week. Mahalo.
Thank you. And seeing no other questions? Thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you.
Moving on to Senate District 21, Senator Mike Gabbert. Is his representative online?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear. Thank you.
Aloha, Chair, Board and Community Members. I'm Melanie, Senator Gabbert's Community Liaison. Um, and the only update that I have for tonight is that Senator Gabbert will be hosting his monthly Listen Story Meeting on Saturday, March 29th from 9:00 to 10:00 AM at the Villages of Kapulee Rec Room Number Two. Um, and Joey Monahan, the Director of Public Involvement at Heart, will be Senator's guest speaker. Um, there's also a Zoom link that is available upon request. You could just email us to RSVP. Um, and with that, I'd be happy to take any questions back to the Senator.
Any questions from members of the board? Seeing none in the physical space nor virtually? Thank you. We appreciate your presentation. Moving on to Representative District 39, Representative Elijah Pirk. Seeing none in the physical space or virtually? Moving on to District 40, Representative Julie Reyes Oda.
Hurry up, you're cutting into your time. That's part of my time. Now, and so Chair, remember I asked you to play a video today, so instead of my time, I'm going to yield my time to my video.
Hi, Representative Julie Reyes Oda of Eva Beach, and I'm here today with Principal Christopher Vanilla from Holomua Elementary. And we're going to be looking at some of the issues that they have here.
First of all, Representative Oda, thank you for being here. Uh, my name is Chris Vanilla, Principal here of Holomua Elementary School. This is my third year serving the school as its principal. We've got a lot of great things happening this school year and we always try to first start off with prioritizing safety. Many of our students come from various geographic areas here. We serve, um, areas from Eva by Journey East, we go to Westlock Fairways Estates, and most recently the new development on, um, the North Park. And when we say we serve the students from different areas, obviously, traffic comes into play. And so one of the things that I have my mind focused on right now is ensuring that our school, our students, staff, parents, uh, get to their destination here at the school, uh, not only on time, but safely. We have obviously no left turn signs, but unfortunately, uh, we have a situation where vehicles make illegal left turns. And if you look out that way, we have the delineators that were once up. I've requested for, um, just some awareness about it. And, um, they're unfortunately in the condition where they're at right now with, uh, vehicles making illegal left turns. And so why am I making such a big fuss up about this? It's because it's really about, again, safety of our students, our staff, the community. This road is right in front of the school. It's heavily populated by traffic before and after school. We have a lot of student pedestrians, we have students on their bicycles, we have parents with strollers. We have our kopuna picking up their grandchildren and so just needed to bring up, uh, awareness and talk about solutions in terms of what we can do to create a safer situation. We've also experienced, uh, drivers, yeah? Um, some of these concerns while they're on Ke'onui Drive is they drive the opposite direction or opposite lane to cut through traffic. And so those are some concerns that I have right now that I'm really grateful that you're here spending some time this morning.
Corporal Pagan, now that you know the issues of this school and the issues with traffic coming on the street out here, could you give us some possible solutions that you think of that can solve this?
Well, I know one of the things that they did before is they put up the no, the no left turn sign. And at one time, they actually had a certain time period where you couldn't, couldn't turn left. That didn't seem to work out so well. So they did put the delineators up on the road. Unfortunately, people tend to go through the delineators, uh, because they don't damage your vehicle as much. One of the things that I would suggest is if, because we have the delineators already letting people know that you can't turn left, is maybe putting small little raised blocks throughout the side so people can't go over them, like a little curve. But not a, not a, not a full curve, but actually a spaced curve. The other thing that you could possibly do with something like this is maybe start having some of the, the students of the GPOs come out in the morning. You know, just to kind of hold up a sign, you know, something a little more than just a no left turn, something more of a no left turn if you care. Uh, devices are put in place to basically save your children, keep your children safe.
I want to thank Principal Vanilla today for sharing his concerns and for his time.
Representative Oda, your, your time with us here has been very, uh, important. Thank you also for listening to our concerns. I feel, um, optimistic and hopeful that we can come up with the solutions to keep our Kiki safe, our parents safe, and so that our entire school community will continue to work together. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I used up my time, so I'll take any questions.
All right. Any questions from board members? Number 10, Anis?
So Chris, he was a former principal for Alemaia.
Yes, and he was my former coworker at Campbell.
Well, for Holomua, um, that's my kid's alma mater, but, um, and Corporal Pagan said put up, you know, the delineators, delineators, but why don't you put bollards?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that, when, um, Principal Vanilla contacted me, I knew that the issue wasn't a state issue. It was going to be a city issue. Um, and since he called me and in his contact, he said how he talked to so many different people. Um, I don't want to just pass it off, so I brought Aaron Ho with me. Um, and then we spoke to him and then the issue was that he had gone to several different places, uh, you know, the departments and tried to get things fixed. Um, and so instead I thought, well, you know what, let me make a video about this and talk about the different issues. And then I asked again for me to bring somebody who could bring, you know, Corporal Pagan to talk about safety. But I know that as of Wednesday, they sent an email to Councilman Toba saying that they, um, put an officer presence and enforcement near Holomua. Because actually the, um, from their exit to Laupaii and then when you make a right on Laupaii, all that area is actually no parking between 7:00 and 8:00 and 1:00 and 2:30. But if you go and look, and I was there at 7:30, they parked there anyways as if it's parked. So what they did was they did enforce
So what they did was they did enforcement there. They also said that they were going to put up cones. This is all temporary. But right now, then DTS is looking at changing it to something else and making it so that it's not run, run overable, shall I, shall I say?
Nice.
Oh, but if you wait for DTS, you know.
We might be here until next year.
Yeah, or something would happen, you know. I mean, I guess I just, I guess we just got to push, keep, just keep pushing and, you know.
So we did, we, and so they had action already this week. We made the video on Monday. I believe police enforcement went there already on Tuesday because this email came on Wednesday. So the reason I'm trying to do this is to make sure that we get more traction so that something doesn't happen, and then we fix it after the fact.
Thank you.
I was just curious, so, nice production on the video. So where did you share that to help increase pressure?
So I was actually holding it until tonight so that this is my, my debut. And Vanilla, sorry, Principal Vanilla, and we can use, I told him we can use it after. So I wanted to wait until I show it to you guys so that you didn't see it before you got here.
Thank you. We're honored.
But is there, is, I mean, yeah, it is an honor. But I'm just curious, like, is there a way? How, do you foresee an opportunity of where you can share this and get it more, an audience so that there is more pressure on them to do something?
Um, I know that he's going to post it. I'm going to post it if anybody would like to share it or give me any ideas, I will take them.
I'll send it to Augie. Just send it to me and I'll send it to Augie.
Okay, oh, no, yeah.
Mike Palmer, you are recognized, sir.
Hi, Rep. Thank you very much for introducing HR twenty-seven, HCR twenty-eight. I see it still doesn't have a referral yet. I hope that happens very soon. And looking forward to testifying to that. I have a, an issue. I've been trying to get ahold of Juliana Coral, who was a part of that original group. And they got on and stated that they would be testing fish in Limu and releasing those results. And that we could contact them and that we could take fish in Limu and that we catch and gather and have it tested for lead. They are not responding at all. I've tried a couple of different email addresses and their website directly. And I'm, my question is, have you been in contact with them at all? And to your knowledge, are they going to be a part of this working group going forward?
So I'm actually very surprised that you're asking me that question because it's nine thirty and I probably met them at ten thirty today, so about eleven, no, yeah, eleven hours ago or maybe ten hours ago, I did meet with the Executive Director of Juliana Coral. There was a environmental, I guess, coalition that was there today in the, in the rotunda. So my staff walked around with me and one of the, one of the places was Juliana Coral. So we got two contacts there. They said the issue was that they changed their email. So instead of dot com, I think they changed it to dot org. And it was probably a miss there. And also, if you're trying to contact, I think Dr. Di Martini, he's on their board, but he actually has a full-time job now, BYUH. Is, so I can put you in contact with that if you want to send me a message.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. John Rogers, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Representative Oda. So I, I think one of the ways I'm going to Holomua, one of the ways that we can work in, I know we've worked together in this in the past is safe routes to school. And the, the concept of a walking school bus to get the parents to drop off their children away from the school and having people be able to safely walk them to the school. And clearly, that street has a great shared use path. It goes all the way to a sing park now, almost, with a, with a little grass area. So I think there's other ways. The one issue that I, I think we both know this and Alex too, or remember Gauss, is that the state won't allow a DOE employee to go off campus to do like a, a, a school bus. You really just need parents. And I think maybe in the future, next, the next legislative, if we can like push through a way to make the DOE be able to somehow allow the DOE to be able to do that without the worry of all the, all the liability and all that. Maybe like with a, a, a school bus driver, instead of a bus driver, it would be a walker that would, you know, be able to do a, a walking school bus for the parents that would prefer not to have to go close to the school. Because you can do, you can do these walking school buses like for a half a mile, so away from the school and it's exercise for the kids. It gets them out, gets them energized for the morning. And so I'm just throwing that idea out for future legislation or to see if we can somehow work with the DOE to work that'll help us. Because it's hard to get a parent to, or parents to, to volunteer that, that time every day. Most of them are dropping off their kids because they're on their way to town or their jobs, wherever. So that, that's just my comment. Thanks.
Okay, well, since I was new this, this, since December, November, I didn't really have that much time to try to prepare for bills. But now, when session ends on May second, we can start picking up to work on bills so that they're better perfected and a little bit more solid coming into January when the due date comes, if we can do that. I can't make any promises, but at least we can see what the regulations are, if we can push something like this and that the research department will have more time for all of those months that we're on off, we're on off time. They'll still be working so they can do things like this.
Thank you, John.
One, just want to put out one word since I have the time. The unfortunately, Safe Route to School, the federal funding that we have chased off the school has been stopped. So we don't have that funding anymore for this year, and that's unfortunate, but just to put that word out.
Thank you, John. Rep. Oda, Reyes Oda, we have Mr. Brett Cobus online for you from, from the community. Brett, go ahead, sir. You have one minute.
Aloha, Representative. How are you doing?
I'm good.
Thank you for signing on to the Convention of States Resolution, HCR thirty-four. We appreciate that. One suggestion maybe is for the school is to have HPD park out there for a week. After a week, and they pull people over, then they, then they can just put one of the vehicles that they're not using since they're shorthanded and just sit it there on the corner and people be, people probably be more aware of what's happening so they can get those non-crossing stuff put in. Just a suggestion. But again, thank you for all you're doing. And is there anything we can do to help you with any bills that may have crossed over?
I only have one of my bills that crossed over, but it has to be heard by the twentieth. And so I've seen that, I think it's GVO, Government, I don't know, the Senate, Senate, when there is someone on procurement, I will be giving amendments and a memo tomorrow to Senator McKelvey to try to get it heard by next Thursday.
Thank you.
For HB fourteen fourteen.
Thank you, Reyes Oda. We appreciate you. In the interest of time, we're going to move on to Representative David Alcos from District forty-one. You have the floor, sir. If you're talking, Rep. Alcos, we cannot hear you. Do you have yourself muted? Okay, we're going to move on to, we can come back to you if you come up online. Representative Diamond Garcia, District forty-two.
Aloha Chair, aloha board members, community. Thank you for being here this evening. I'm going to just give a brief update. We just passed crossover at the legislature, so we hit the halfway mark of the session. This session, there was a total of three thousand one hundred and seventy-two bills introduced. For third reading, three hundred and seventy-six bills have passed the House and three hundred and nine bills have passed the Senate. So most of the three thousand bills are as of now dead, and we're down to about six hundred and fifty. And within this next month and a half, they'll just die, die, die till we'll end up with about two hundred total that will pass. Just some updates. The Salary Commission approved a hefty pay raise for legislators recently. And so I have a little blurb in here of my opposition to that, myself and Senator Awah. On the Senate side, we co-sponsored a resolution of which my colleagues, Rep. Reyes Oda, signed on to as well to reject the proposal from, from the Salary Commission. Just an update on the back page, HB one 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 eight, which is a controversial bills, bill regarding the removal of religious exemptions for vaccinations that died. So we're thankful for that. I have a little update on the five, the five resos that my office introduced. The first is asking the, the new US Transportation Secretary Sean Duffy to conduct a performance review of the Honolulu Rail Transit Project. The next reso is urging the legislature to conduct mandatory inquiries into all fatalities and serious injuries that occur to children involved in child welfare services. Hawaii has a bad track record when it comes to taking care of our children within DHS. There's multiple news stories that's breaking right now about children dying in care, being abused in care. And so this reso calls on the legislature to open up investigative committees into those cases. The next reso is urging UH to conduct a full study on the EVA Plains. There's lots of reports of homes cracking, driveway crackings. Honolulu Middle School in Ho'opili has contacted our office about, it's a new school, by the way, it was only built about five or six years ago. And their, their big slabs of cement are filled with cracks across the campus. And so it's a big problem. And so we're asking UH to conduct a geological survey and a geotechnical study of the EVA Plain. Next reso is again rejecting the salary recommendations. And the last one is requesting the auditor to conduct an audit of the monies appropriated to Hawaiian homelands pursuant to Act two seven nine, three years ago. That's pretty much it, and I'm open for questions.
Board members, any questions? Board member Isaiah?
Yeah, thank you. Very briefly, on your resolution addressing child welfare, my wife is a guardian ad litem. She's been working in the child welfare program. Now she's involved in the court improvement program at the family court. And she tells me almost every day, it's a lack of social care workers. That's like, that's the fundamental issue. If you were to say, like, what can we do, the one thing to solve the problem? We need more social workers. And part of it is they're paid an unlivable salary. So you just, you can't even recruit them because nobody can live on that salary. So that would be a tremendous resolution. I think that that'd be kind of like, that's the fulcrum on what needs to happen for child welfare stuff. But I think great resolution, all of them in fact, but maybe for the next one.
Sure.
So something to do with, you know.
No, there's, there's lots of vacancies across the state and Hawaii state salaries are just not competitive enough. And so, you know, that's one of the reasons why the salary, the salary increases were pushed, you know, they're trying to get quality, qualified people to actually run for office. And so those are the arguments. And I'm not opposed to salary increases, but as I said in my testimony, in most private, private sector jobs, there's a three percent increase, a five percent increase, maybe a ten percent increase. But nobody gets a forty to sixty percent, percent increase like that, especially public servants. And this increase would put our Governor Josh Green amongst the top three highest paid governors in the nation. And I just, I don't think it's time for that, so.
So as a follow-on to Board Member Isaiah's question, you said legislation to conduct mandatory inquiries into the cases. So, and I don't want to play semantics here, but the cases or the organizations who have cognizance over the case.
So the resolution is listed on, on the Capitol website, but it, it, it covers the specific fatality cases that took place within DHS from nineteen ninety-seven until current.
So investigate the organism, DHS, or the cases?
It's to, it's to investigate those specific fatalities, the involvement in DHS, what role did they play? What was the mess ups? Why weren't their follow-ups involved? It seems like when we ask DHS to do those investigations, like was mentioned, they're just understaffed. They're so focused on trying to do their job, there's no time to do that. So we're just asking for the legislature to open up investigative committees itself, to call them in, question, and get to the truth for these families. Many of these cases still have had no justice involved, so.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Mitch, you have a question?
I guess you answered my question about the salaries, but like you said, it qualifies people, you know, the raises and stuff.
Yeah.
But the cost of living may go up three percent, nine percent, eleven percent. I got a two percent increase, but you know, we're still there. But like you said, I'm not, I'm for one, not opposed to you guys getting that. Like you're saying, it attracts the qualified people. And for, for getting a salary where hopefully you can, with the cost of living, you know, how it is, you can concentrate more on your job as a representative of our community instead of trying to think, okay, I'm making only eighty grand. My wife got to catch out a half or I got to do, you know, another job, you know. All that plays a factor. And then going back to the governor, being the top three governors in Hawaii, again, cost of living, in a way. We're the highest in the, I think, in the nation in cost of living. So maybe it'll attract, you know, better governors, mayors, whatever. But I'm, I, I'm not opposed to it. And, you know, you guys do a great job and you guys should get paid for what you guys do.
Appreciate that. Thank you. You know, and I just want to note that we did get a recent salary increase just two years ago. And so we went from, I think, sixty-two thousand to now seventy-four thousand we're at now. And so that was just two years ago. And then, and then now they want to pass this, which would jump us up to ninety-seven thousand in twenty twenty-seven, and then an increase each year till we hit one hundred and sixteen thousand. So that's that. Also, one thing, there's a difference between cabinet members, the governor versus legislators, we're part-time, right? And so tho, those cabinet directors, they're full-time positions. Most civil service positions are full-time or part-time. I know it doesn't seem like we're part-time. We're, we work a lot, but the, the job itself requires us to be physically at the Capitol for four months out of the year only. So. Thank you.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I want to see if Rep. Alcos is available. So, Rep. Alcos?
Hi, guys. Hi, can you hear me now?
We got you. Go ahead, Rep. Alcos. You have three minutes, sir.
I'll make it fast. Thank you, guys. I'm just going to say thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Chair members. Campbell High School groundbreaking, I just want to talk a little bit about that. You know, having that groundbreaking at Campbell High School, a lot of you guys been a big part of getting that sports complex there, the community. And just saying that it, it is a dream come true to see that field being completing. And still, it's more projects to make it even nicer. But I got to say, you know, John, the Neighborhood Board, many years you guys have been always pushing for Campbell High School. So thank you again, and thank you to the community. And, you know, Principal John Henry, you know, our AD Rory Pico, everybody had a big, big play in making that sports complex really nice. Keonuula Elementary School, Principal Talga, I just wanted to give a shout out to him. He's looking to become Principal of the Year, hopefully. Hopefully he get an award by Island Insurance. He might even get twenty-five thousand on that. He had a ceremony this past week and I just, and we also had a presentation at Keonuula, talking to the kids and being able to share some books. So that was awesome. We was also at Principal Greenland's in Lima, where these kids did some projects and showed a lot of their talent, where they were building some fish ponds. And, you know, how they was preserving the fishes, our ponds that we get out there. They had a field trip and, you know, they did some blueprints. So that was awesome as well. Project Nihamayo was another one that we went to this past week, was about sex trafficking community, making awareness to what's going on in our community and had a lot of people come out, police officers came out, first responders. And NART Road Reso, I put in a NART Road Reso for putting out a sidewalk out there. So we're pushing that resolutions this week at the Capitol. And I guess Diamond and Julie Oda covered a lot of things already. So thank you. If you guys have, if you guys have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you, Rep. And I, and I do want to give you some extended time for questions. And unfortunately, between you and the previous elected official, you, you rarely get this time to, to field questions. So we're going to open up the questions to the board here.
I have a question for Representative Reyes Oda.
And this is, yeah, this is for the, for Rep. Alcos.
I, I do want to say one more thing is that the city and county or DOE, if, you know, on for safety wise, after school, if anybody want to go out there and help and support outside of the school zone, you know, there is a maybe paid position out there for two hours a day or four hours a day. And, you know, they can help out and get paid as well.
Okay. Sorry, Zach, but, but we moved on to the, okay. Board member Tananis?
Hey, Representative Alcos, I don't know if you are.
Hey, Representative Alcos, I don't know if you or one of the other reps can answer this. Is there still any house bill out there for wildfires? The wildfire bills? Well, I know there are multiple ones, but the one for the Hiko. Do you guys, any of you, any, do you know?
I'm not. Yeah, maybe Diamond, no.
HB one six nine zero or. I don't know. Is there any still alive?
I'm not sure right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board for Rep. Alcos? Any questions from any virtual board members for Rep. Alcos? CNN for board members. Okay. In the interest of time, going to move on to committee reports. Any reports from parks?
We don't have any report.
Okay, education? Thank you. No reports from education. Transportation?
Sure, I got a just quick update. So last meeting, we talked about Geiger Road and Kapale Parkway, the right turn lane. And just the way the traffic works there. So we got a DTS traffic engineer to go out there two weeks ago. And unfortunately, they went at the front ten, I think. And they didn't see any problem with traffic flow. So that's about all we're going to get from them. And last, and this is I'm asking the community and the board, if you're you see this issue that was noted last meeting, the February meeting. That the traffic backs up and all the issue, get some video of it and post it, send it to me, my email. That's on the Neighborhood Commission's website. And that way I'll get back in contact with the DTS folks, the traffic engineers. And get them at least so we get a timestamp, date, dating timestamp so they can then and if the more video, the better. So it's two days, three days consecutive days, the better it is to get them to realize the issue. I think they went out there a little bit too late. I don't know if it's school generated. I don't know because I don't drive that area. But so that's what I'm asking the community and the board if we can get some video. And then the other issue is FDR in Philippine Sea, the left turn lane. It was asked that maybe we could add a left turn lane to because of all the traffic that backs up on FDR. And also that fact that there's a bus stop right there when people go around. The folks who want to turn left are going kind of into the bus, the bus stop. So H dot, I we submitted a claim to H dot and I'm just waiting for an update. And I'll try to provide that for next week, the next month. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Board Member Rogers. And again, a special thank you for joining the meeting virtually. While you are literally on the other side of the world, John Rogers. Thank you very much for your level of commitment. We appreciate it.
It's it's actually three hours earlier, but a day later. So I'm on Friday, but three hours earlier. So it's actually an easier meeting for me. It's not so late at night.
Awesome. Public safety, I'm sorry, AMPO. John, you have anything for AMPO?
Yeah, just a request. I did attend that meeting and I talked about the shape up for school funding, grant funding. We lost that right now until they decide whether they're gonna give it back. We also lost, the whole country lost the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Formula Program. And this was the billions and millions and millions of dollars that was going to build electric charging stations all over the country. And so that was lost. And then. And then we also, we approved the the transportation improvement program. Twenty twenty five to twenty twenty three, revision three, which it didn't have any, anything that affected the Kapale area. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Public safety, community outreach. CNN, economic development, CNN, climate change?
Yes, yes, I'll try to make this quick. I know we don't have much time. So the permitted interaction group on community resilience hubs, we met via Zoom in February. And I I we did kind of some research and found out. Two years ago, EVA Beach had a Zoom focus group hosted by the Center for Resilience Neighborhoods at Kapialani Community College. And I put the report in the chat, a link to it. And what we found was they had come up with nine possible resiliency hubs. That would be where people could go. We were especially focusing in on a natural disaster like a hurricane or a storm, right? But we found out that's as far as they went. So we drafted a letter. None of these sites had been communicated with. So we drafted a letter and sent them out to each of those sites. The two top sites in the report were University of Hawaii West Oahu and the CROC Center. So we haven't heard yet from them. And so we're trying to take these recommendations. And get some actual resiliency hubs where people could go, especially in a natural disaster. So our next meeting is March twenty, I'm sorry. Tuesday, March twenty fifth, three o'clock PM Zoom. Please contact me if anybody wants to be a part of this. I think it's really important to have someplace for people to go during a natural disaster. And resiliency hubs are really important. So I will put my email in the chat. And if anybody's interested in participating in that, I'd love to have you.
Thank you, Susan. And lastly, Mike, I hope you don't mind. I'm going to wrap up here because we're right at ten o'clock. Remember for the Military Affairs Committee, April twenty fourth, seven o'clock right here in the EVA Beach Library. Next regular meeting scheduled for Thursday, April tenth, twenty twenty five at seven PM, virtually via Webex and in person at the EVA Beach Public Library right here. City and County of Honolulu Hawaii Food Bank are partnering up to fight against hunger. Neighborhood Assistant Jeffrey Jones will be collecting donated canned goods at the next Neighborhood Board Meeting right here, Thursday, April tenth, twenty twenty five. Regular board meetings are broadcast every first Sunday at six PM and every second and fourth Friday at ten AM on Olelo Digital Forty Nine. And we are adjourned. Thank you for attending. Two AM here.